Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I would like to ask Mr. Turner first to explain how the public can participate remotely in tonight's meeting.
Yes, thank you Chair Dorn. Regarding the procedures for communicating tonight, the commissioners will have their webcam on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we asked that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you're displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask you to turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, or if you're calling in by clicking star nine on your phone, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. With that, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you. So I'll do a roll call now. Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, President.
DeCarty.
Good evening here.
Harris.
I'm here. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year. Commissioner Kennedy.
Hello, hello.
And Commissioner Riggs.
Hello, good evening.
Commissioner Tate has informed us that she is unable to be present this evening. With me, we have six commissioners. We do have a quorum, so we'll proceed. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have reports and announcements for us?
Good evening Chair Dorn and Commissioners. I have no updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. You know, I got the PDF agenda, but I found it a little bit more cumbersome than going on the Agenda Center and clicking on the links. Is that just a temporary IT problem, or what? When I went on the Agenda Center, there was no agenda for the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I understand that can be a little confusing. I think this is how we're doing it going forward, but I can certainly provide your input to those who are putting the website together.
So for members of the public, if they go on the Agenda Center, there is no agenda for the Planning Commission? Is that, is that the intention in the future? It won't be published there?
Yes, because I think that's an older page. I did try Googling Menlo Park Planning Commission just to see what happens, and it does lead to the page with the agenda, so hoping people are able to find it that way.
Okay, so it will be available online. It just won't be available online at the place where it used to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions from the Sandmeyer? Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, I'd just like to echo the technical difficulties along with the continuing difficulty that I have as a commissioner logging in over the last six months. I mean, we all have different browsers, but I think I think our systems have to work with all the browsers, at the very least of the seven commissioners. And I also found that the new website, while very attractive, again, for my browser at least, is quite cumbersome, and I cannot move among the attachments from one to the other. I have to look at all 367 pages. So I think it is correctly noted a beta site. I think particularly with the issue that Chair Dorn brought up, we need to make sure that from day one, the public has ready and easy access to the agenda. And if it's been moved from one location to another, there need to be detour signs that would make sure that that process is obvious and simple to our residents. So I'll just contribute those suggestions.
Thanks. I agree with all those comments. If there are no other questions from the commission, I'm going to move on. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once in a public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up in our public comment other than to provide general information. So just as a reminder, we will have additional opportunities for public comment on each item that is on the agenda tonight. This public comment is for items not on the agenda. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised for public comments?
I do not see any at this time. Just as a reminder, if you do want to provide public comment, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you are calling in, click star nine and that will raise your hand through the phone.
So I'll give it just a moment to see if anyone raises their hand. Still no hands raised?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and move on to the next item on the agenda. It's the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar tonight is the approval of minutes for the November 1st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes that require them to come out of the consent calendar? Commissioner Harris.
Yes, hi. In reviewing the minutes from the 11-1 meeting, I had both a general and a specific question, and I'm not really sure if this is the time to ask it. So maybe I'll just ask it, and then you can shut me down if this is not the right time. If a constituent requests information during a general or a general public comment, I understand it's not in the agenda, so we can't address it, but I'm wondering how is it determined whether and when that information would be distributed, and specifically I'm referring to the request from Pam Jones asking a number of questions about ADU applications. And additionally, at the end of the meeting, Commissioner Tate requested that when this information was made available, to please also send it to the commissioner. So I'm just wondering how this can work and what, what would be the process?
I'm not sure what the Roberts Rules of Order on that is, but I think in the interest of expediency, I'd like to see what Ms. Sandmeyer has to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for following up. I could definitely send that information out. I think in this case, we have the constituents' email. I think normally we may not, so they would have to follow up with the Planning Commission. But we'll certainly get that out.
I think as a general matter, informational items at the end of the agenda is probably the best place to follow up on things like that. Commissioner Harris.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's no actual comments on the minutes, no one wants to remove them from the consent calendar, I'm going to call for a vote on the consent calendar. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Abstain.
And I will vote yes, so the minutes are approved with a vote of five in favor, one abstention. Next, we'll move to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. The first item under public hearing, item F1, is a use permit by Brandon Nitter for 209 McKendry Drive. This is a request for a use permit to demolish existing one-story, single-family residence and detached garage, and construct a new two-story residence with attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width, depth, and area in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential District. We have a staff report on this from Mr. Turner. Do you have any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Should we? So, good evening. I do not have any additions or corrections to the staff report. However, we did receive an email that Commissioner Barnes intends to recuse himself, and that's probably what he was raising his hand for, but I'll let him say so.
That is correct.
Thank you for pointing that out. So Commissioner Barnes, I think the etiquette is to accuse yourself now. Yeah, thank you. So we still have five commissioners present. We still have a quorum. So I'd like to see if the applicant or representative would like to make a presentation on this application.
Hi there. This is Brandon Nitter, Angie Lynn. We both have lived in Menlo Park for approximately 22 years now. We're going to have Andrew McIntyre and Toby Long both do the presentation today, or available for any questions as we go along.
Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Toby Long. I'm an architect that has been working with Brandon and Angie for some time, helping to develop plans for the reconstruction of their existing home, with a new home on the property. I don't know if we want to pull up drawings or not. I'm not sure if that's critical. I think the project does generally speak for itself, and I know that we're going to have a little bit of a staff presentation, so maybe I'll leave that as an open question. In short order, we're here this evening, and thank you so much for your, for hearing us tonight to present the project proposed at 209 McKendry Drive in Menlo Park. As Brandon and Angie represented, they've been longtime residents of the community and the neighborhood, and I think like lots of folks in Menlo have been looking forward to the opportunity to replace an old home with the next home for the site, hopefully here for the long run. We're proposing a project today which is compliant with zoning requirements. We are at about third, 2355 square feet of living area with a 400-square-foot garage. It's a two-story building. The project has a fairly obvious, I think, site plan configuration at the front setback, meaning our side setback lines. The ground floor of the property is the living area, as you've probably seen from the floor plans, with a garage on the north side, or from the right if you're looking at the property from the street, a central entry, a small office and flex room on the south side of the lot, and of course, an open living space stretched out across the property facing towards the rear. The second story consists of two kids' bedrooms and a master suite. We've developed a sort of transitional design, a little bit of a traditional sensibility with regard to some of the massing and the roof lines, a little bit of a contemporary flair with regard to some of the fenestration, a fairly neutral material palette this project proposes, essentially a light-colored stucco, as well as some dark windows, dark trim, and a bit of a dark wainscoting to sort of ground the building and articulate the base of the structure a little bit more clearly. Most of the existing landscaping is intended to remain. The project should be fairly low impact to the site. We are also currently conceiving of this as a modular building project, which is something that I've done, I think, successfully a few times in Menlo Park, and I look forward to coordinating that here on this particular property. We've provided some staging diagrams in our package to help identify how the construction system and sequencing will unfold at the street line. We're still sorting through a few technical issues with regard to PG&E, but that sort of puts the project on its current course and brings us here this evening, says Brandon and Angie represented. We're looking forward to answering questions and to being available to the Commissioners as you deliberate.
Thanks. So we have another speaker on this application? Did you hear that correctly?
I think Andrew, you might have put yourself as a speaker, Andrew McIntyre.
No, I think, I think Toby said pretty much everything that needed to be said.
Okay.
For now.
In that case, I'll ask the Commissioners if they have any clarifying questions of the applicant before we move to public comment on the application. I'm not seeing any, so I would like to open it up to public comment. Mr. Turner, can you see if we have any hands raised on this application?
Yes, we do have one hand raised at the moment. The and you. Okay, so at this time, we have Andrew Barnes. Andrew, please state your name, political jurisdiction, address. You'll have three minutes to give your public comment, and you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to, my name is Andrew Barnes. I live at 210 McKendry. I'm a resident of the Willow. I live across from the subject property of the Knitters and the Linds. And a couple of points about this particular project. I think that the applicant did an extensive job with their outreach. It is well documented in the packet, and it was broad-based, talking to the neighbors, me being one of them, and then on both sides of the street and in the vicinity. So I thought the outreach was very well conducted. The design and materials are are both compatible with the neighborhood and thoughtful as to the preferences of the owner in what they intend to build, and I thought that was well done as well. And lastly, the sighting on the, on the property, I think, was well done as well and thoughtful as to both the neighbors on either side in front of them. So for that reason, I think this is a project which is well done and certainly worth the consideration of planning commission for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do we have any other hands raised?
I do not have any hand raised at this time. As a reminder, if you would like to give a public comment, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. And I do have a hand raised from a caller. It just gives me your number, so I'll just say the last four digits are 2484. So you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation, and you should be able to speak now.
Hello, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Steve Mack. I am a neighbor of the adjoining property at 166 Willow Road. I've lived in this area. I grew up in the house adjacent to the, the property for about 40 years. I've lived here. I've lived in this neighborhood. The homes, the properties, all the lots are small dimensions, width, length, so forth. They're designed and that such for small homes, single-family, single-story homes. I didn't have a chance to voice my objection to the tree, the heritage tree being removed, and I regret that. I guess I only wanted to bring up my concerns with this project for myself and for the adjoining properties, my neighbors. Just a couple of things, one being the loss of privacy. The adjoining homes on Willow and on McKendry are single, single-story. I personally don't like the idea of having someone look directly into my yard. I value that privacy, as I, as I believe my neighbors do. Another point that I'm concerned about is the loss of natural light from a, from a two-story building. And last but not least, that would be the diminution of value of my neighbors' properties as well as my own. I don't know how to monitor that, mark that, but it's, it's an overwhelming concern of mine. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, Mr. Turner, do we have any other hands raised?
At this time, I do not see any other hands raised. Just as a reminder, if you would like to give public comment, click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or click star nine on your phone if you're calling in.
Okay, I think people had a little warning since we did have a couple of public comments. So I'd like to close public comment at this time and bring it back to the commission and see if any of our Commissioners would like to ask questions or make comments on the application. Not seeing anyone wishing to speak. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, thank you for the application, for the clear presentation. I appreciate both public comments and on the second public comment, certainly appreciate the concern about development and building and lot sizes, but as a community, we've determined and set rules for fairness that I believe certainly apply in this instance. I think this is an eminently supportable project, and I'm prepared to do so.
Would you like, Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that I agree with Mr. DeCarty's comments. Well said. We don't set more restrictive rules in the most of the city. We do in the Laurel Line neighborhood have increased second-story setback via lowered daylight plane, but the rest of the city has not adopted that. And then just as, as a reviewing Commissioner, I have to say I regret when I see a pair of equal gables as the front elevation of a, of a house. And I think this one particularly emphasizes that awkwardness with the early 20th century corner windows. But having said that, we also in the city do not have aesthetics requirements. And if in Menlo Park, if the owner likes what they're going to build, that's up to them, and so I will be supporting this project.
Thank you. Not seeing any other comments. Would anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I'll move to approve that submitted.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kennedy, seconds. I will call the role. Commissioner Barnes is recused. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy? You're on mute?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. I'd just like to get a verbal vote so we can get into transcript. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And I'll vote in favor as well, so we have approval with a vote of five in favor, one abstention and one absence. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioners. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, item F2. This is a use permit by Gabriella and Peter Hebert at 755 Hermosa Way. Request for a use permit to demolish the existing one-story, single-family residence and one detached accessory building, and construct a new two-story residence with a basement on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the RE Residential Estate Zoning District at 755 Hermosa Way. The use permit request includes excavation with the left side setback for a basement light well. Excuse me, that's within the left side setback for a basement light well. The project also includes a detached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, which is a permitted use. We have a staff report by Mr. Pruder. Do you have any, anything to add to the staff report or any late arriving public comments that you want to draw our attention to?
Good evening and Happy New Year, Chair Dorn, Planning Commissioners, and members of the public. We do have a few updates for this project, mainly dealing with public comment. In addition to the eight public comment letters that were included within the staff report that was published, a total of 26 additional public comment letters were provided after the publication of the staff report and agenda packet. And I would like to add that the agenda packet has since been updated to include 24 of these 26 additional comments, but two comments were not provided in time to be included in the updated packet. Of these 26 comments that were provided after publication originally, 16 of the comments were in support of the project, and 10 comments expressed concerns with the project. And the concerns were generally focused on issues of issues with the amount of encroachment that is proposed in this use permit for the light well, and the second-floor massing as well as outreach efforts. And with that, those are all my updates for this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you or the Commissioners have. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any questions for Mr. Pruder? Okay, I'm not seeing any with the applicant or their representatives care to make a presentation.
Sure. Can everyone hear me right now?
Yes.
Thank you. So our architect, Kirby Lee, is also here, but I thought it might make sense to just share more about myself, my family, and background to the project as well as the development. My name is Peter Abear, and with my wife Gabriella, six years ago, we moved to Menlo Park to live, work, and raise our family. We have two children, eight-year-old Felix, five-year-old Gigi, and a one-year-old dog, Bruno. Now, while we grew up on the East Coast, today we're proud to call the Allied Arts Neighborhood in Menlo Park home. We deeply believe in the value of an engaged community. Active young families are the lifeblood of any thriving city, and both our children attend Oakdale Elementary School. We're committed members of this community. My wife Gabby serves in the board of both the Menlo Park African Education Foundation, as well as the Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo, and we're active supporters and volunteers with many local organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula. Now, there's a final proposal here before you tonight, and that proposal is the result of an exhaustive review by the Menlo Park Planning Division, whose staff provided constructive feedback and explicit step-by-step guidance throughout the entire process, requiring numerous plan changes to adhere to the city's zoning code and guidelines. And as you've already read, the staff now recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed project. Something else the staff highlighted in its recommendation letter, significant plan revisions made by the owners that were not directed by the city nor to adherence to code. These were instead voluntary concessions to resolve what we were told, both verbally and in writing, were the most pressing concerns of our adjoining neighbors. Now, some, some history here. Six months ago, in July 2021, we purchased the Hermosa property, 755, as well as its project plans. Before closing, the prior owner shared that they'd encountered friction over more than a year of neighborhood engagement before finally throwing in the towel. I did not receive, nor did I have the benefit of reading all of the historic letters from December 2020 to May 2021 that were included in tonight's package before we purchased the property. I'd always assumed that there were misunderstandings and miscommunication along the way, but I had faith that our family's genuine desire to appease neighborhood concerns in concert with open, honest, and transparent communications would prevail. Our first priority as new owners was getting off to a fresh start, introducing our family to both adjoining neighbors on Hermosa Way and ensuring that they understood our positive intentions. We wanted to be empathetic to their unique points of view, concerns, and requests, and worked diligently to find agreeable solutions to address any outstanding issues. And I was fortunate enough to meet with the residents of 777 Hermosa in person to hear out their perspective. Despite multiple attempts to meet either in person or speak by phone with our new neighbor at 719 Hermosa, we had to unfortunately settle for sporadic email correspondence. Now, over that period of time, we cataloged and addressed every single one of the major issues that are adjoining, mentioned, adjoining neighbors told us were of the most important concerns. Higher windows on the north side of our house, no upper-story windows on the south side, master bedroom balcony removed, outdoor oven removed, planned basketball hoop eliminated. We provided a full set of the revised plans that we intended to submit to the city to both adjoining neighbors. Both provided affirmative written acknowledgement via emails in August of 2021 that we had resolved their principal concerns. Now, reading from one of those, August 2020, Now, reading from one of those August 2021 emails, "We believe that you have the right to build the home you want. And while we might be happier if the house were not as close as it is to the setback, we're not going to contest it." And from the other adjoining neighbor at 719 Hermosa, quote, "I think my main concerns have been addressed. Thank you for your help with these clarifying these issues," end quote. The revised plans that they reviewed in August in great detail are identical with respects to the setbacks and planned light wells to the final proposal in front of you today. I'd be happy to provide copies of these email communications received from both of the adjacent property owners, acknowledging that we had resolved their principal concerns. It's also important to highlight that the current plans in before you are vastly different than the previous plans submitted to the city, to which all of the original comments on page 116 to 145, the staff staff report and agenda packet were addressed. Our architect Kirby Lee summarizes on pages 103 to 104 of the staff report agenda package, the extensive changes made to the original submittal in response to the concerns addressed by those comments. Now, if that were the end of the story, we could all move on with this evening. But just days ago, I was made aware by a sympathetic Hermosa Way resident that one street resident had this weekend circulated an email to other street residents expressing concerns about the light well encroachment on the south side of the property. This is an email that we, as fellow Hermosa Hermosa Way neighbors, never received. It's my understanding that the purpose of setbacks is to minimize proximity of above-ground structures to neighboring structures to address mass and bulk of the above-ground structures and to permit landscaping between the structure and the property line. The encroachment of the one below ground light well maintains the setback of the above-ground structures and has no impact on the mass and the bulk of the building. The current plan provides more than adequate landscape area between the light wells and the neighboring properties. In fact, both adjoining neighbors signed off on the adequacy of the landscape plan. Yesterday, one of my neighbors was kind enough to provide me with a copy of correspondence sent last year in April of 2021 by the prior owners of 755 Hermosa to one or more of the neighbors who had commented in the initial plans that they'd be removing light well encroachments and would conform to the setback requirements. The original plans had the light wells encroaching on both sides of the property within five feet of the property lines. The plans were redesigned to have 10-foot setbacks for light wells on both sides in response to their concerns that were raised. We've since reached out to the prior owners and they have indicated that they understood that increasing the setback for the light wells to 10 feet on both sides of the property met the setback requirements and did not constitute an encroachment. This misunderstanding led to their statement that they would eliminate any light well encroachment into the setbacks. We're unaware, we were unaware of this issue and neighborhood concern. It was never once brought to our attention by either of the adjacent neighbors. At this point, there is no feasible way to increase the setback for the light well on the south side to 20 feet as it was otherwise create life safety issues. Now, last night I was told that some neighbors on Hermosa Way are philosophically opposed to any use permit that would allow an encroachment of underground light wells into the setback. However, pursuant to Menlo Park's code, underground light wells are allowed to encroach in the into the setback with a use permit. Unlike a variance, a use permit is not a special privilege. Applicants need not prove that they cannot build their product, the project without the encroachment. In fact, a use permit should be approved unless the proposed use will be, quote, detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such a proposed use or be detrimental to property improvements in the neighborhood of the general welfare of the city, end quote. The burden is on those challenging the use permit to provide facts about our specific project that will be detrimental to persons or property or the general welfare. As outlined above in the staff report, our project has been thoughtfully designed to address any and all of the principal concerns of our adjoining neighbors and neither of them expressed any objections to regarding the the light well into the side setback as shown on the existing plans. We've seen no evidence that our project would be detrimental or harmful to any other neighbor or property or general welfare of the neighborhood or the city. We are here before you tonight with a simple desire to build a beautiful and enduring family home that we understand conforms to Menlo Park's building code, meets the highest aesthetic standards of the neighborhood and ultimately proves to be an enduring asset to both the community and city at large. Thank you for your time and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. And your architect is going to speak as well?
Our architect Kirby is available for questions. I wanted to make sure that I was told we had five minutes allotted, so felt that that was important to provide that context.
Thanks. I do have a question for the architect and can you direct me to where the the landscaping plan that shows the landscaping of the vicinity of this light well, would that be sheet G9? Is that the best sheet to look at for this?
Um, it should be on A 1.1. Sorry, I don't have the specific page of the agenda package.
If I may do the chair.
On the right, I see A 1.1. On the left, it's G9.
Yeah.
124 of our packet.
If I may do the chair, it's D6 for attachment D.
D6 for attachment D. Is that better?
Yeah, that's the, that's a label I have as well.
No, I'd find the current format a lot harder to find my way around than the way we used to organize these, for the record. Okay, so it looks to be the same as what was on G9. Yeah, it is the same A 1.1. So it appears in two places in the packet. So then just to clarify, the landscaping plan in the vicinity of the light well is for a fence and then a row of shrubs. Is that is that hedge? What? We have a row sort of cylindrical objects on the plan.
It's intended to be a hedge. So, yes, likely probably a laurel hedge.
Okay. And the fence presumably is a six-foot height limit?
I believe the existing is six feet or seven feet.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have other clarifying questions from the commission before we open up the public comment? We will, of course, have opportunity for the commission to comment further in question further after the public comment. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yeah, as long as we're looking at that sheet, this was a question I, can you point to which of the heritage trees that was removed for development, not for the health or the other purpose, but the the one that was removed for development?
Hasn't been removed for development yet, but is tree number one, which is the magnolia on the east south side of the property? So not sure if I can.
Let's see. So on the next page, tree number one. Yeah, got it. Okay. So the heritage 19 and a half magnolia to be removed? Okay, thank you.
And actually, I have a follow-up question. So I believe the light well that is encroaching into the setback is the one on the left looking from the street. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DeCarty, you still have your hand up? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. I had also noted interest in the privacy hedge. When a two-story building proposes a hedge, I can't help but want to know how tall is it anticipated that this hedge will be maintained? And of course, a hedge has to be maintained or it becomes a solid row of trees instead. Is this a seven-foot hedge, a 12-foot hedge, 22-foot hedge?
This particular species grows up to 20 feet over the extent of its, at its lifetime. So the, it will be seven feet when it goes in, but the particular species can grow up to 20 feet.
All right. And then the spacing looks to be fairly tight. Is it something like 24 inches?
About 36.
All right, and the trees naturally have a spread of what? About 20 feet? 30 feet?
Oh, so that it's this, it's a hedge. So they I think over time grow, I think like they're, want to say about four feet wide. They become a solid hedge, though.
All right. And so does the project propose that it is maintained at a given height? Or will this in effect be a wall, a green dense wall of trees that want to be 20 feet wide and or 30 feet wide and are spaced three feet apart?
Oh, no, they're 20 feet high. Sorry.
Right. And so they would be naturally around 20 feet wide if left to themselves. But if they're spaced three feet apart and and of course, the hedge hedging will keep them in shape. But obviously, this would be a truly solid wall. And you said it was the laurel species?
Yes.
All right. Well, that is a very solid growth. So does the project propose a maintenance height? Or will these trees just keep growing until the gardener can't reach them anymore?
I typically, we do, I think around 17 to 20 feet is where they are kept to trim to.
So the gardener will trim both sides of the property line on scaffolding so that he can reach up to 20 feet?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure of the technicalities of it, but typically, yes. Our, the methods that they do use to trim them, they are kept to around 17 to 20 feet.
All right, we can follow up later. This is just a question period. Thank you.
Big Chair, could I provide a quick update on the zoning ordinance? So if it is kind of a solid, a hedge, it has to be maintained at no more than seven feet. If it's trees that are spaced apart, they can grow taller, but a hedge would have to be maintained at seven feet in height maximum.
Thank you for that clarification. Do we have other questions from the commission at this time before I open it up to public comment? Okay, Mr. Turner, can we see if we have members of the public that wish to speak at this time?
Yes, I do have one hand raised at the moment. I will now introduce Molly Fogg. Molly, as a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live or your organizational affiliation. And you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi. Okay, just wanted to make sure I'm being viewed right now. Are you able to see me? Okay?
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um. So my name's Molly Fogcard. Well, I live next door at 219 Hermosa, so I'm on the other side. And I'm glad to be able to to speak with you guys tonight and I appreciate you guys taking the time. I've lived here in Menlo Park and have raised my three daughters. We lived first on Hermosa Place down the street and now we currently live where we lived there for 10 years. And we've lived here for four, a little over for maybe five years. It's myself and my three daughters. I have 12-year-old, 13-year-old twin daughters and a 12-year-old daughter, all of which went through Oaknall and are at Hillview. So it's us four ladies in this house and my former partner lives close by. And we love, love having raised our family here in Menlo Park and feel very, very privileged to be here, not only within the broader Menlo Park community, but particularly on this street. And as we've seen all of development happen on the street, we've been very pleased with overall, many, many of the homes that have come in and particularly how, one of the most striking features is how all the neighbors have always been very courteous to talk to their neighbors and hear about their feedback as to their plans and incorporate that in. Unfortunately, I have to say I haven't experienced that in this project and I wanted to state off the the bat here that it's it's a misrepresentation that I've approved any of these plans or given my feedback as to that extent because that is not how I feel and it's contrary to my interest. The two principal issues I have with this, I'm gonna start with one of my my biggest issues is that on the second story, there is a big open deck area that has a direct line of sight into my daughter's bedroom and bathroom as well as my private areas of my dining room, kitchen, half bath downstairs and and other very public areas. This is something I brought up with the last owners that they said they were going to remediate in the design and had expressed a concern with this before, although I can see that that has not been changed. And as well as the setbacks that have been, all of the square footage that has been set into the setbacks, including the light wells that are being excavated in the setbacks. I I just want to say that overall, this house, we wouldn't have any of these questions about this house or this conversation with this house if they had just stayed within the codes as they were set forth up front. Instead, it seems that they've been trying to build a house where the bulk of the mass of the house is pushed out to the exterior of the properties imposing on the neighbors. And then we're now having to have these discussions of if that's appropriate or not and what can be done to work backwards from there. So I think that this isn't in line with the spirit of the the neighborhood or certainly not in the laws of the codes or the spirit of 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 what we've all seem to care about our neighbors' privacy. And I feel directly like I shouldn't be asked to give up value in my home so that their home can have more square footage and particularly to give up privacy in my home so that they have more square footage.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, do we have other hands raised to speak now?
Yes. We, we did. Doug Devine, okay, your hand is raised again. So at this time, I will introduce Doug Devine. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live or your organizational affiliation. And you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Hello. My name's Doug Devine. My wife and I, Nancy Devine, live at 618 Hermosa Way. Since 1979, we've raised our three children and we now often see our eight grandchildren. We're talking tonight in terms of objecting to the encroachment into the side setback. We're concerned that this will set a precedent for the whole neighborhood. Two new houses that are now being built on the on our street have stayed within the side setbacks, which we appreciated. The new owners have never reached out to us or to the neighbors down on this side of the street. When we went back and read the code allowance 16.08100, it says, "Within residential districts, excavating into the required setback shall not be permitted unless a use permit for this purpose is obtained from the planning commission." We don't see with a lot as large as ours and it as this one in 755 that it's necessary to go into the side setback. We're asking that the new homeowner redesign his house as the new house that will be built next door to us at 654 Hermosa Way had done and ask the new homeowner to redesign his house so the light well does not exceed into the side setback. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, Mr. Turner, do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak?
I do not see any hands raised at this time. Yes, I do. I'm not sure. It it keeps going up and down. Beth? Is that a hand raised or? Not a hand raised. Okay. Yes, I do. I do have a hand raised. I will introduce Beth Benjamin at this time. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation. And you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Good evening, um, my name is John Durritt, my wife Beth Benjamin and I live at seven 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 Hermosa Way. Our house is immediately adjacent to the A Bears property. Uh, first, I should say the A Bears have been very proactive about reaching out to us about their project, they're very nice people, they will be a great addition to our neighborhood, and we welcome them. The A Bears purchased the property and architectural plans, as Peter said earlier, from previous owners, and that's what's made this a bit of a complicated process. Prior to the A Bears taking ownership, the original plan included light wells that encroached into both side setbacks um on our side by six feet. We opposed the encroachment uh into the required setback on our side, as did Molly, who has spoken previously. Several other neighbors, as Doug has said, also opposed encroachment into setbacks for fear of setting a precedent um and having an impact on the neighborhood and on the character of the neighborhood. The prior owners before the A Bear subsequently revised and resubmitted the plans with the light wells removed from our side. Based on written communication from the previous owners to the neighborhood, it was our understanding that the light wells were removed from the required setbacks on both sides, but we confess that we did not look closely at the plan for the other side, the side that Molly's house is on. We still had some significant privacy concerns, but when the A Bears took ownership, they immediately reached out to us, we were delighted to have a good dialogue with them. They addressed our most significant privacy concerns by raising the height of the second story windows on our side and removing a large second story deck, not the deck Molly's referring to, but another deck in the plans. All, um, although we might have preferred that such a large house not sit directly on the ten foot setback, we were satisfied with the changes. Now, however, um, we're in a funny position because we think it would be hypocritical for us to ask that light wells be removed from the setbacks on our side as they have been, but then be okay with them encroaching on Molly on the other side. We think a lot of this comes down to whether the zoning requirements truly require thirty feet in total setbacks or not. We don't want to deny anyone their dream home. Part of the setbacks requirements real, or are they like traffic lights in Rome merely advisory? If they are really zoning requirements, we should abide by them, except in cases where there is a real necessity to deviate from them. I want to reiterate that the A Bears have communicated with us throughout this process, and they have addressed our privacy concerns. We couldn't be more delighted to have them as neighbors. At the same time, we are concerned about the precedent it would set to allow an encroachment into the thirty foot setback. Ultimately, we think it's far more important to have good relations with a great neighbor than to fight over nine feet of dirt. We can live with whatever the planning committee decides. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to see if we have anyone else from the public that wants to speak, Mr. A Bear, I see your hand raised, but you'll have an opportunity to speak later, we, this is for members of the public to speak now. We have any other hand raised?
Um, at this time, I do not see any additional hands raised, um, just as a um reminder, if you do have a comment, click the hand raise hand button in the bottom of your screen, or if you are calling in, I do see a couple callers. If you're calling in and want to give public comment on this item, click star nine, and that will let us know that you have a comment.
Okay, let's give it just a minute. Any other hands raised?
I do not see any at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Um, I actually would like to lead off uh with a question um for the applicant or from Ms. Lee. Um, I'm concerned about this light well, this uh is something that I suppose I am philosophically opposed to light wells and encroachments in general, and one of the purposes of the the uh the setback is for landscaping purposes, to plant trees in the setbacks. Uh, and that's especially important with a two-story house, and and we have overlooked concerns as we do here. Um, so, you know, I I think I have reservations about setback, about encroachments in the setbacks for light wells in general, and I've expressed that in previous applications as well. Um, I I find it particularly troubling here, I I think that the landscape plan is inadequate and I I think maybe not well thought out. Uh, the hedge is not allowed to grow beyond seven feet, but apparently that was the plan. Uh, so that would be a violation of zoning ordinance, we're to be allowed to grow up to to twenty feet. And I'm not convinced the seven-foot hedge provides adequate screening for the neighbors, and I think the neighbor has expressed that concern as well. Um, so I think that it it's particularly troubling in this instance. Um, I'd like to hear more from the applicant uh on on that question. Uh, and then I I've got another question as well, but I think maybe we can start with that, Mr. A Bear or Ms. Lee, if you'd like to talk about screening for this side of the house.
Sure, um, let me first uh say that one, with respect to, given that privacy is the topic of conversation with seven nineteen, as mentioned, um, I had not shared, but I'm happy to share full correspondence of my engagement with the neighbor, because I think that's extremely important to understanding, one, the effort that I put in to make sure upon purchasing this property, as um John Durritt so kindly put, was genuine. I really sought to meet with both individuals at a minimum speak, and I did not have that opportunity. That said, through the correspondence, which with through email, um, which I'm happy to provide now or separately, um, the owner of seven nineteen um expressed satisfaction with what we had done. And my intent, our intent is privacy, I have a young family, I have no interest and nor no desire to create anything that would overlook on a neighbor's property. And so when we presented the options, specifically even the type of plants, and I'm, you know, gonna be this is above my head with with some respect, but the screening, it was for maximum privacy, and Ms. Cardwell um signed off on that, and you can read those emails. And at no point in time, and I just think it's really, really important just to reiterate this, at no point in time in all of my correspondence, was there any mention of the light well at all? I provided all of the plans that you've seen with respect to the setback and the light well, there was not a single mention. And so, um, so so again, our intent, and and it was uh in conjunction, in this case, with this the southern neighbor, was to find something that provided that screening, to provided privacy, because I recognized first principles approach, which what I've taken in being a great neighbor already in Menlo Park, but specifically with this neighbor, I wanted to understand what are your concerns, and whether it was Beth Benjamin and John Durritt, where I sat with them in their backyard. All I wanted to hear, what are you concerned about? How can I address them? Because to me, that is the most important principle, is as a good neighbor, how can I make sure that they understand from that moment I took possession? Whatever happened, and I've kind of gone through the litany of that background, just because that there is nuance and texture that's important, but that is the only thing I care about. And so I just i- in it, and it's just unfortunate that I hope that comes across, not only the genuine intent, but all of the steps and actions that we've taken that were met with positive reception and specifically comments, yes, that addresses uh, you know, my issues, thank you. Um, uh, there there, that's the only thing I can do, everything that I've heard this morning, or the this evening rather, the first time I'm hearing about it, the first time I am hearing from seven nineteen. I have been here since July, I am five blocks away, there were any issues at any point in time. That's all I needed to hear, anything I would have done, and this is the first time right now, tonight, that I'm hearing that, so sorry, I'm getting emotional, but this is my family, and this this is something that I care deeply about, and that's my apologies if I got emotional.
No apologies necessary, I I accept your goodwill, and I think you've done a lot of outreach, and and we uh we do appreciate that. Um, but I think we still have responsibility uh to the neighborhood of the city to, you know, to get the application right. Um, so, uh, Ms. Lee, maybe you can address the the screening questions, I mean, we have uh second story windows and decks and uh zoning ordinance, which will only allow your hedge to grow to seven feet.
I think one of the things that really I think creates immediate privacy is that we don't actually have any second floor windows along the south side. So there are, oh, sorry, on this upper story of the south elevation, there are only windows on the first floor, which would be easily concealed by the hedge. Um, and also, I think to note is um this landscape plan is preliminary, I think it shows intent, but specific species are yet to be decided. Um, and also the balcony, which Lee is a walkway to connect from the master closet to the office, and there is not intent for it to be a space that to gather. And it's also set back twenty-seven, over twenty-seven feet from the property line, which is the minimum is twenty feet, so even with creating distance um to create that privacy.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, this might be overkill, but I will do this, just if you allow me, uh, on August twenty-third, I specifically said, four oh four P M, just making sure, this is to seven nineteen, just making sure the changes we made addressed your concerns, all specifically around privacy. Quote, I think my main concerns have been addressed, thank you, thanks for your help with clarifying these issues, end quote. That was, there was no other correspondence between at that point in time to literally today, that would have indicated that there was any displeasure with privacy, any displeasure with respect to the light well or setbacks, no communication. I have done everything I possibly could have to try and communicate and serve all of the adjoining neighbors' issues.
Thank you. Um, do we have other commissioners that would like to speak? Uh, Commissioner Kennedy?
No, I I appreciate the passion on both sides of of this project, and uh, you know, I I feel for everybody on the, you know, on on Hermosa. Um, I think also part of the challenge is, is, you know, there's always a a few streets in on both sides of El Camino that have constant constant projects being done, and Hermosa is really one of the most recent ones over the last two or three years, where there are, there's just a constant a constant construction process happening, and so I imagine that that gets really, really tiring. Um, I'm really happy that it no longer happens in Allied Arts, right, because we we suffered that for many years. Um, I, you know, and I do think that the diligence that you have, that you have put towards this project, especially a project that seems to come encumbered with a lot of um, a lot of challenges, and I can't imagine that you'd be doing more. If the question, I think, really only that we're dealing with here is the light well. And again, I think that has been fully, I think that's been discussed, and um that you've addressed, you know, you've addressed the the rule and measure of how how, you know, i- it is codified and how we would look at it here. You know, the other piece to look at is clearly some of your neighbors are really unhappy about it, right? And so what's the measure of that? Maybe the project, when it's completed, you know, it's it's a fresh start for everybody. Um, I I don't want to push the decision-making on this, but I would move that we do approve this project. You know, uh, it's a project that was started a very long time ago, and you are doing, you know, everything that you possibly can, and I think even more than some people would offer uh to bring to the table. Um, and I think, you know what, that's good, if you're resourced, that maybe, you know, that that is gonna happen, so I would move that we approve this project.
Okay, um, well, I guess I need to call for a second. Mr. Riggs?
Yeah, I'm not ready actually to second, um. Wanted to make some observations. I mean, starting with, uh, this is um a stylish home uh and with what appear to be um quality finishes and a a lot of thought detailing and so forth. That said, um this is a big reach for any neighborhood to go all the way to the maximum of what could conceivably be built in terms of floor area. Um, and um, I think the big reach concept was evident in the plans that Mr. Bear bought, or the Air Bears bought, uh, where it included uh every feature that I guess a real estate salesman would want to see listed. Um, you know, barbecue deck, uh so forth, um pizza oven. So bringing it back into a neighborhood scale is challenging. While I um share the chair's hesitancy about um setbacks on particularly on a half acre lot, where there's an awful lot of room to work with. Um, I think the applicant has made the point that it's approvable by use permit, and that we have to have a reason to turn it down. So I, I find myself somewhat restrained there. I do wish that the chimneys, other than the freestanding barbecue um chimney, weren't covered in shingles, that's something that uh anyone who has taken architectural history can't help but cringe upon seeing. Uh, but again, that would be a a choice of the applicant. Um, if that's what he wants to present to the world, a minor point with the other points that are here. I do feel that uh having completely blank second floor walls is a detriment to that neighbor. But that mean, that neighbor may not be aware of what that's going to be like to have a building next door that has no windows in it. Again, that doesn't seem to be something that uh is hugely topical here tonight. So uh, I'm I'm left with one concern that uh I mean, other than the, you know, massive facade, that sort of undeniable wall-to-wall to the maximum setbacks, but I think the unworkable element here is uh that privacy was to be addressed by landscaping, and that the landscaping proposed is um, as far as I can tell, simply unworkable um based on its intent. Um, hedges are something that um are based on bushes and can grow um seven feet high in Menlo Park. Uh, planting trees as hedges, I have seen pretty much throughout my life, and the result is always the same, it looks hugely awkward, unfriendly, and I will tell you, it's extremely expensive to remove when you've planted a dozen trees in the space that fits three, and the removal cost is close to two thousand dollars per tree. Um, so I think that really needs a rethink, and I don't know if um, this is the right venue to rethink that element of the landscape plan. Um, if uh you had a landscape architect present and a proposal could be made, um, perhaps we could react to that. Um, but I don't, for one, feel comfortable with making a landscape recommendation from the DS, the theoretical DS. Um, and uh I don't know that we'd be able to judge it on the fly. So that's something that I would be much more comfortable um, having made professionally, uh, given to the planners for review, and then uh let us have another look at it. having made professionally, given to the planners for review and then let us have another look at it. So rather than a second, I'd like to offer for my fellow commissioners thoughts and comments whether we are confident enough to approve this project subject to a new landscaping plan that would go through our planning division. Or, and we've done something like that before. But I'm thinking tonight that this project has already been through the planning division. The planning division has already reviewed trees that want to grow to twenty foot high spaced at thirty six inches and called out as a hedge. So I think maybe we need to just step back for a few weeks. And and look at this with a little more care. So anyway, in an effort to move things forward, I'll make an alternative motion, which is to continue this project for the benefit of a revised landscape plan.
Thank you. Before we go on to further seconds and votes, I'd actually like to ask a follow up question to Ms. Lee. She D fifteen or A three point one shows this elevation. And there are no windows on the setback on this side. But I am seeing some windows in the middle. Correct? So there are second floor windows on this side of the house. They're just not all the way out to the setback line. Is that correct?
Those are actually much further beyond. So it's the actually the other wing in the background.
The other side of the U, if you will. The the house is designed so that in in regards to privacy, everything looks inward. So privacy is top of mind such that people do not feel intruded upon or that, you know, they feel safe. That was the entire design principle and ethos and spirit of what we were doing was to look inward rather than on the second floor at our neighbors.
Thank you.
It's fine. I just added that. So we weren't relying on the landscaping to provide privacy. It's actually the house has been designed to provide privacy to the neighbors. As Peter said, to look inward and to look at over our own property rather than the neighboring ones.
Thank you. Okay, so are there other commissioners that would like to speak now or would like to second one of the other motions? Mr. Cardy.
I have a question about the neighbor's concern about the deck or the walkway on the second floor. And I think we were just looking at it as in the conversation about the windows that are on the other U. Do I have that right? Is that the, the deck that is of concern? And if it is, is there? What is this? What's the screening right now? Or what's the railing or the edging of that right now? And what, you know, what does that look like?
There's a guard rail that's solid up to thirty six inches. And then there's a six inch metal hog wire to bring it up to forty and two inches to me code.
And that's used for your purposes is just to get back and forth and not to hang out on. So is there any potential conversation with the neighbor about some kind of? And I don't know in exactly what the code allows there, but essentially a higher screen or or wall or something that's more than thirty six inches plus six inches, which is what, four feet? And would that be something that you all would consider? I'm not doing anything from the dice. I'm just trying to understand if if that in the public comment was what I heard is the major concern from the immediate neighbor. I'm trying to understand if that's addressable from your perspective.
If I could perhaps just add, and Kirby can provide an architectural perspective, but what you're describing, which is quite a rational approach where you understand the concerns, make design adjustments and revisions, provide that new design for someone to review, help them understand how that would impact or not impact their privacy is exactly what we did. And so, as I said, all of these things, like what your first principles approach to me is absolutely the right way to look at it. Is okay, here, let's work together, sit around a kitchen table, understand. You know, what you what you care most about, and I have no interest in doing the things that you would be most fearful about. So let's design a project that meets that criteria, which, as I mentioned, I have documentary evidence. We've done, made those revisions specifically, and the agreement was yes, that meets my concerns. And so that, but I agree with you, those are things. And we did all those things. That was the time period from when we purchased the house in July to when we ultimately made those revisions and got that affirmative consent. But, you know, it's not lost on me that that would be the right approach.
And I think speaking architecturally, I definitely think that there are options, even providing like plantings on that walkway or even architecturally, something that would provide a screen. I think the main thing is we we're not aware that that was a concern and so did not have a chance to address it.
One additional, just to comment on the landscaping as a privacy hedge, we have a landscape architect that has been engaged box leaf design. And so as I said, I would not profess as the owner of the property nor my wife to have any particular request for a species, the entire design is creating a privacy hedge that was suitable for a neighbor, which we went through these options, provided that to the owner at seven nineteen and that met the criteria. So I am certainly happy to proceed forward if, you know, and if there's other landscape plan revisions, as I said, that is not for my benefit of the beauty of these plants. It was purposely to address the concerns, which we were told we did an email correspondence before maybe an hour ago or forty five minutes ago.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'll echo. I have another question. Chair Dorn, just want to echo Commissioner Kennedy's comment, which I thought was well put, which is appreciate the care that you all have for the neighborhood and and feel for you that you are in this position and appreciate the goodwill. The last question I have was just a, an understanding on this, which is the A D U lined up is is lined up further back in the yard from the light well that we're talking about, I believe. And that A D U is actually much closer to the property line and is nothing that we can look at here, given state legislation, which I completely support. So I'm, I'm all in on A D Us. But I just wanted to just for as a point of reference, the concern about the light well and encroachment. And am I accurate in reading this that actually the A D U is is equally or further toward the property line? And of course, sticks up as opposed to down. And either the architect or perhaps staff can confirm that if I'm looking at that the right way.
Yes, that's correct.
So. So I, I, I completely appreciate the dilemma here and I would be prepared to approve this project. I appreciate Commissioner Riggs' thought about the landscape plan. We've done this in the past. I'm prepared to approve this project with the direction that the neighbors worked with the city staff to sort out these two issues. And that they come to a decent agreement on this and trust that they can make that happen. I will say, and I, I appreciate the point that Mr. Aver, that you've reached out a lot. And that, you know, a neighbor has said that they feel good about something, but people have the right to change their mind. And so I would my direction would be to, to let the past be the past and just look at these two issues and to get those resolved. But I would rather approve this project, give that guidance than to continue the project and have it come back.
Yep.
So I would like to clarify, Commissioner Riggs, your motion was actually not to approve subject to further discussion of the landscaping plan, but to continue the applications of future meetings. Is that right?
Um, that was the motion that I made, but I did throw it out for comment first. And I think Commissioner DeCarty summarizes it well, but when when we narrow it down to the two issues, and I want to thank Ms. Lee and the applicant as well for clarifying the intent of the building facades in in addressing privacy. It does seem to me that the hedge is more of an issue of planting something that can actually come to fruition and and be reasonable and maintainable. And that and expectations are not regarding second story window privacy, but that's not the issue. And then the second issue, if I understand it, Mr. DeCarty referred to would be the balcony, which really seems to be the only remaining second story privacy issue, which I'm sure Ms. Lee and the others could come up with something like a couple of feet of privacy glass on top of the railing, for example. You know, textured glass, something that we see often in urban context. So I would like to withdraw my motion. And we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
It's not clear we do. Commissioner Cardy, were you intending to second the motion?
I'm willing to make a second and include Mr. DeCarty's qualifications.
We've got a couple of hands raised. I think Ms. Sandmyer was first.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple comments and questions. One about the comment about putting obscure glass on top of the railing. I don't know if that would be possible because then it becomes more of an enclosed space and it's no longer for open and facing outward. So there may be some, because that area is not counted as floor area currently. And that my second kind of question is about, I think there was some idea that staff may work with the neighbors and the applicant, which may be it may not be easy to find a solution everyone agrees with. So it would be easier, I think, for staff and clearer to get a little more direction of what kind of landscaping the commission is looking for. And then we can just kind of work with the applicant to make sure that's, that's shown on the plans.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes has his hand raised.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Chair Dorn. Couple of comments on the project. I must say that first and foremost, you know, every time I hear neighbors at odds of projects and neighborhoods, it kind of, it always gives me and in a certain respect breaks my heart because, you know, folks have to live by each other. You know, and anytime they're discordant in a neighborhood, it takes some repairs. So my hope is that however this turns out, there will be repair within the neighborhood. The second thing about this, and we've been, we've talked a little bit about precedent and from my perspective, I I want to be clear that the way I look at it, it's not the job of the applicant to design a project which serves to be the preference of the neighbors. It's the job of the applicant to design a project which conforms to development standards. It is defensible. And I the idea that someone is sitting in someone's kitchen and asking them what they think they should asking a neighbor for opinion on how they should design their house, I think is, is absolutely the wrong direction. So I, so I, I think about that, then I think about this project. And I think I want to come back to the reason why we're here. The reason why we're here is primarily because of this excavation into the light well. And I want to point out that this is entirely the prerogative of the applicant. The applicant has a twenty thousand square foot lot and is proceeding to put, you know, six thousand four hundred eighty eight square foot of build of space on excluding the basement where, you know, six thousand four hundred ninety eight is allowable. So they're maxing out on the above ground. They're adding, you know, almost three thousand square feet of basement. You have a square footage minus the A D U of of the buildings of almost ten thousand square feet. And to think that this excavation light well could not have happened anywhere else on the property is preposterous. So what this is in fact is an externalization of the preference of the applicants to proceed with plans which they purchased for the property and have the planning commission, you know, somehow be drawn into weighing in on people's character, on intentions, on the beliefs of, you know, people getting along with other people. I think that's the wrong approach on this. So I I just have a reaction to that because I, I think it's the wrong direction. I think it was incumbent upon the applicant to figure out how to put this minor setback into their twenty thousand square foot lot. But here we are, we're, we're looking at a project where as part of the use permit, one of the central tenants that I abide by is, you know, is something detrimental to the neighborhood to the extent that it would not be okay to approve the use permit. And frankly, no. It doesn't rise to that level. And at the same time, I don't like the, I don't like the premise of what we're being asked to. The exception were the, the intrusion we're being asked to agree to based on the reticence of the applicant to modify their project as many other people have to and choose to modify the project based on the knowledge that they don't want to have to come in and ask for. This is part of their plan to be in the light well because anyone who has paid attention to any of the approvals knows that excavations in the light well require special attention. So you know, it's a lot of bluster, but I'll leave it at that. Those are my thoughts on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, actually, I think your comments are very well taken. And I want to reflect on two of them. It isn't, this is not an imposition into the character of anyone. And I think Mr. Aver has proceeded in good faith and demonstrated a lot of attention to the neighborhood and, and to the cohesiveness of the neighborhood. So I really don't want to imply that anything to the contrary. But I, I do think another of your comments is worth reflecting on. And that is, you know, this is a twenty thousand foot minimum zoning area. The lot is almost twenty two thousand square feet. It's twenty one thousand seven hundred nine four. And to think that there's no way to get, you know, a house onto this lot without going all the way to the setbacks and then excavating into the setbacks in this one area. I find that hard to understand. I think that you could get an equivalent sized lot, house on this lot and not have to ask for any use permits. The use permit requires us to find that this could be built without impacting the comfort or general welfare of the neighborhood. And we've had ten comments from neighbors expressing their belief that it does impact their comfort and general welfare. So I think we need to take that into account. I have a feeling that I'm in a minority on this. We have a motion and a second before the commission. So we will begin to vote on that before we can entertain other motions. But I will say if this motion doesn't pass, and I intend to vote against it, I'm going to offer a motion to continue the application so that it could be further work on landscaping plans and whether they can be accommodated in a way that would allow this light well into the setback. But we do have a motion second before us. If anyone else wants to speak, they can speak, but we can't take any other votes on anything else until the motion before the commission is voted on. We have anyone else that wants to speak in the application? We have anyone else that wants to speak in the application? Okay, I'll call the roll. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Riggs.
I'm sorry to be last minute, but just to clarify the motion as it currently stands. Are there any qualifications?
So I believe. My understanding is there's not, that the motion is to approve the application as submitted. And that you would, you'd actually second the motion. On that basis. Is that not correct? Commissioner Kennedy, your motion was to approve as submitted. Is that correct?
It was.
Commissioner Riggs, you'd expressed originally some reservations, but I believe you amended your second to. Be a straightforward second of the motion as made. Is that correct?
That's correct if I can understand that. It is not laurel trees planted three foot on center. It is merely a hedge to be identified. With appropriate plants.
Ms. Sandmyer, is that clear enough for the department?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if that was a formal condition.
I'm happy to amend my motion to include. Permission to Riggs recommendation.
Okay, and Commissioner Riggs, you're, you're happy with that then?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I've lost track again. Do you need a second?
I know, I think you made the second. I was just clarifying what actually the motion is.
Alright.
Commissioner DeCarty.
I appreciate the discussion here on all of this. And the. Direction from staff to be explicit here. I, I'm prepared to vote either way, but I wonder if the recommender and the seconder would also. Do direction that they're on the second floor balcony. Needs to be. Acceptable so that it doesn't turn it into a room. Screening either plantings or some kind of screening that goes up to six feet. Rather than the current 36 and six in order to address the neighbor's concerns. You know. I, I won't say anything more about my reasons why. But I wonder if the maker and the seconder would consider that.
Before we ask them, I'd like to clarify with Ms. Sandmyer if there. Is anything that's permissible under the zone code? For that purpose.
I think it might be difficult if it's actually on the deck. If the, if there's a condition to plant trees in front of the deck. To provide screening, I think that. That is something that. Wouldn't be an issue. But in closing the deck further, I think then it, it becomes more of a room. And depending how it's done would count as floor area.
Ask a quick clarifying question?
Sure.
On the semi, I appreciate that. So you could not do a series of planters that would be on the deck up against that fence that would have the effect of having. Screening. That would not be permissible. That would create an enclosure.
I suppose like. Planters with three foot tall plants. May work. I don't think it would provide complete screening, but. I think, yeah, something like that would probably be okay.
I go, well, either three feet doesn't address my concern. We're just doing a planter with three feet. If it doesn't get to six feet of blocking, then it doesn't matter. So, so. Can that happen or not?
I apologize. I think I misunderstood. I thought you meant three foot tall planters on the three foot. So there's a three foot tall railing, and then if you put some kind of planter on top of that. That's three feet. It would equal six.
Yeah, all I'm trying to do is get to six foot of screening that doesn't make the applicant not be able to build it because it creates a room. It might be able to address the next door neighbor's concern, which she was very pointed about. And which is taking your direction, which is you're very clear. Then I appreciate this, that we should not put staff in the middle of trying to negotiate this. That's all I was asking. So. If that could be doable, that would be great. I'm also aware that we're at 8:41 and we have many other things to do tonight, so I do not want to prolong this any further.
Commissioner Harris.
Hi. I don't think there's a whole lot more to say that hasn't already been said. I appreciate all the comments from my fellow commissioners. And I would be prepared to accept this project. Without the changes to the deck, only because it seems that it would be a very difficult thing to do. However, I would. I would suggest to the applicant that. You think about what might be some things, some plantings or something that you are allowed to do. To help sort of prepare that relationship with your neighbor as well as the concerns. I'm not going to say anymore because I agree with Commissioner Barnes that it is not our job to. Kind of make these marriages happen, but I want to make sure that. You know, that we're doing what we can, and I appreciate Ms. Lee for all of her. Application. So. I'm prepared to accept the project as it is.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. You know, it's not at all outside of our habit as a commission to recommend. Trees be planted at sensitive areas. Not at all. And although I hoped not to be developing it here at the meeting. It does appear to me that with the 27 foot balcony setback. First of all, maybe it's not as big as an issue as it has been on our R1U projects. But also that. Does leave room. For. In place of or in between the seven foot high screening hedge. That a couple of actual trees get planted. Such that they are more or less positioned, one or more are positioned. Between the balcony and the sensitive view areas of the adjacent property. We've done this before. It doesn't seem like a big deal and it usually doesn't cause any consternation with the application, so. Is there any reason? We can't include that in our recommendation for. A clarified landscape. Proposal. To be reviewed by staff with the purpose of. Placing one or two trees such that they would. Before too long, provide some visual screening between the balcony and the adjacent property sensitive areas.
Commissioner Kennedy, are you amenable to? Mending your motion on that basis?
Yes, I was just stretching. Yes. So what is the, what is the full? Recommended change to or amendment to my, my? Motion? It is, yeah.
Since I made it or was asking, I'll just say that based on this conversation, I'll withdraw it and I am ready to take Commissioner Harris's guidance and I'll vote to approve as already. If Commissioner Riggs would like to continue by all means, but I just wanted to make sure that people knew where I stood.
Right.
Alright, through the chair, then. I would clarify that. A landscape plan be resubmitted to. Just to clarify that the hedge is not based on trees. And that. One or two trees in coordination with the planning division. Would be added in that sensitive area. Such as at the property line. Between the balcony and the. Neighbor areas to the right. And, and then again through the chair, it seems appropriate to have the applicant comment whether that. Seems acceptable from their point of view. Or doable.
The short answer on the acceptable is yes, our interest is in creating, has always been in creating privacy. Is not for aesthetic purpose, although we would want to certainly fall in line, Commissioner Riggs with that, but it's. Our entire intent here has been to address the needs of. Privacy, and so I'm sure we can find some hemicable solution there.
So through the chair, I would, I would call that. Genuinely a screen rather than trying to attempt a hedge or a wall. You know, where I, I think we all know if you put something that just sort of gets in the way of a view, it doesn't have to be a wall to, you know, create a sense of privacy.
So Commissioner Kennedy, are you amenable to mending your motion on that basis?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. Mr. Barnes.
Reluctant, yes.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Register reluctant, yes, myself. I am opposed to excavating into the setbacks, but. I think that there's still room in this case to put some. More effective screening in there, so. I'm going to vote yes as well. The application is approved with six votes in favor, one commissioner absent. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Everyone.
Okay. We should keep our time in mind. We do have a lot of items still on the agenda tonight. I'm going to move to the next item, public hearing item F3. Architectural control below market rate housing agreement. By Dan Beltramo at 1550 El Camino Real. This is a request for architectural control to construct, construct a new three story residential building. With eight townhouse style units on a parcel in the SPECRD. El Camino Real downtown specific plan zoning district. The existing onsite two story office building would remain and surface parking lot would be reconfigured. The proposal includes one below market rate BMR unit. For compliance with the city's BMR program. We have a staff report on this. This one is by Mr. Pruder. You have any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Evening Chair Doran. I think commissioners and members of the public, I apologize. I do have a few updates, the first of which there was another public comment for this project that was provided, just one. And that was earlier today, and my understanding is that is also. Within the. Updated agenda and staff report packet, and so that comment is currently available online. And. Also, I do have a. Presentation that I'll be sharing, and then following that, the applicant team will be presenting as well. So I will kindly ask that staff present that. And I can now speak to that. Okay, so I will now begin with the presentation. Just excuse me for a moment. I'm. Going to set up. The. Full screen view. For the presentation. Just setting it up right now. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much for your patience. And again, good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Pruder, Associate Planner with the Planning Division, and tonight I'll be presenting a brief staff presentation. For the project located at 1550 El Camino Real. And. On to the next slide. As a brief overview, you'll be making a final decision. Sorry about that. Too many. You'll be making a final decision on two actions this evening, which involve. The. Architectural control request. Okay, sorry about that. Then hit one button. Okay, there we go. Architectural control request and also a below market rate rental housing agreement. And just for context, the Housing Commission recommended approval of that below market rate rental housing agreement on September 1st, 2021. And the next slide here, we have a. Zoom in of the site plan for this project and just to go over this briefly, as mentioned earlier in the summary, that. Chair Doran provided the proposed project would involve the demolition of some surface parking spaces. Located closer to the San Antonio Street facing frontage, which is in this drawing. Near the top of the drawing. Along the property to accommodate the development of eight rental townhomes, and in particular. It's in the configuration of one three story townhome building. And as part of the BMR requirement, one of those eight townhomes would be a low income unit. To satisfy the BMR requirement for this property. An existing two story office building that is fronting onto El Camino Real, which is seen at the bottom of this drawing would remain. And the remaining surface parking area, as you can see in the middle of this drawing, would be reconfigured. And then on the next slide, as noted in the staff report. It has been identified that 67 parking spaces in the surface parking lot. Were provided on the proposed site plan, but 70 are required. And so within the 70 spaces, the specific requirements require that. Four need to be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act or ADA. And so staff has been working closely with the applicant team. Identifying some conceptual approaches to revise the surface parking lot to accommodate the 70 required parking spaces. And we've also provided condition 5D. In attachment A of the staff report, which reflects that requirement. To have a revised site plan that addresses this parking deficit and gets this required 70 spaces on the drawing and therefore developed on the site. And that particular requirement, condition 5D, would be subject to the review and approval of the Community Development Director, Transportation Division Manager. And the Engineering Division, along with the City Arbors. And then on the next slide here. Just a couple more to go in closing for this. You know, presentation, just a reminder that you'll be making a final decision tonight on the following two items. Again, the architectural control request and the BMR rental housing agreement. And staff. Has indicated in the staff report that we recommend approval of this project. And this concludes my presentation. And I'm happy to sit with any questions that you may have. And in addition, I would also like to point out that. Our design review consultant Arnold Morella is available for any questions or concerns as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. I do have one clarifying question. So this is a final approval. But it still requires an additional. Four parking spaces?
Yes, that is correct.
So it's, it's approval that's final, but it's subject to them finding room for extra parking spaces.
Yes, that is correct.
Being satisfactory to the planning department.
Not only planning, but I would indicate the Community Development Director. Who oversees planning, Transportation Division Manager, City Arbors and Engineering Division. We're making sure that with that condition of approval, that all of these bodies of reviewers. Give an agreement that it's acceptable to have the 70 spaces as they propose.
Thank you. Do you have any other clarifying questions for Mr. Pruder? Mr. Barnes, you're looking like you want to say something, but you don't have your hand raised.
No, thank you for asking.
Okay. Okay, well, in that case. Would like to see the presentation by the applicant or their architect.
Good evening, commissioners. Hi, everybody. I'm Jeremiah Tolbert, Tolbert Design Architects, and I'm joined with my associate Jennifer Price. So we're also joined with our clients Margaret and Dan Beltramo. They're in the audience this evening. They are natives of Menlo Park. With the Beltramos family been here since 1880. And if you're doing your math correctly, that's before Menlo Park was officially Menlo Park. Their kids and their grandkids reside. Here as well, and so to say the least, they are for real established and for real rooted and for real committed to this community. And although they're not deep pocketed out of town developers, this eight unit building that's before you tonight. Is a major undertaking for them, but nevertheless. They've worked very hard for the past four years to get this point to present to you guys tonight, and. This is a project that they hope. You and their kids and their grandkids could be very proud of. Jennifer. See where you are. Jennifer, are you there? I see.
It's here. Ms. Price, you're muted. You can unmute yourself.
You're still muted, Jennifer.
Lower left of your screen, there should be a mute icon, microphone.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that technical difficulties. I just wanted to make sure that I have control of the presentation. Which it seems like I do. Okay. Um, good evening, Commissioners. Oh, gosh. Um, I am. Good evening, Chair Doran and Commissioners. To sort of go over our project, I'll be reiterating some of the points that Matt made just a moment ago. Our proposed project is located at the corner of San Antonio Street and Ensenel Avenue. We are redeveloping a portion of the existing parking lot to construct to this three-story townhome. All all front doors will be along this San Antonio Street frontage. The new townhomes total approximately fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-seven square feet with units ranging from twenty-one hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet. The Mission-style design aesthetic was selected to blend in with the existing fabric of the neighborhood, which has a delightful mixture of both traditional and transitional buildings. The traditional Mission-style design features light-colored stucco with dark windows and dark trim. Each unit has a private two-car garage that is located on the south side of the building, which faces the existing parking lot and the existing non-medical office building. Each unit also boasts private outdoor space. The project features all-new landscaping, including a wonderful mixture of indigenous and drought-resistant plants and ground cover, as well as Ginkgo biloba trees and Saratoga laurels per the City Arborist's direction. We have had a very successful community outreach during the review of this project, where we've received only positive feedback during the open houses that we've held at fifteen fifty El Camino. A copy of all of our outgoing mailing materials, as well as all correspondence that we have received, has been provided to the city as part of our submittal packages. Now, again, we've only received complimentary feedback thus far. All that our project is fully compliant with all zoning requirements. We are redesigning the current parking lot to provide the seventy spaces that are required. And so this is the schematic that we've worked with our civil engineer on. And so my colleague Jeremiah and our civil engineer Kwong Tran are all available and more than happy to answer any questions you may have. And so this is the latest parking plan and site plan that meets the seventy parking space requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission before I open it to public comment? Not seeing any. Mr. Turner, can we see if we have any members of the public that would like to speak now?
At this time, I do not see any hands raised, but as a reminder, if you would like to provide public comment on this item, please click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, you can click star nine on your phone. And as a reminder, each speaker will have the opportunity to speak once on, on an item.
Okay, let's say, let's give it just a minute to see if we're getting hands raised. No hands raised?
No hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. See if anyone would like to speak on this application. Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Chair Doran, and thank you to the applicant for bringing this forward. Couple of things I really like about the project. You are making better use of that parking lot, the existing surface parking. So love that. Love the fact that you're putting in some units for folks to live. Love that as well. I am completely unconcerned about the number of parking spaces. I think that as a rule, we overpark. So, you know, that'll work itself out, I'm sure. I would like to talk, it seems as though in through the chair, before I ask the applicant a question, if you allow me just to ask a question of staff.
Sure.
And it just relates to the entitlements for this project. It, it seems as though, Mr. Pruder, we're being asked to weigh in on architectural control. And is that because there's a pre-existing downtown specific plan within which is it? So it's in effect streamlined on the entitlements. Seem like that's a direct word. So is in effect set up on the entitlement side that our way in is as it relates to architectural control and BMR agreement? And that's the primary inflection point because it is in the DSP. Am I kind of understanding that correctly?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Barnes. I believe I understand the specifics there. The answer is generally yes, but the architectural control trigger is more specifically geared towards any type of multifamily housing. So that could be in any zoning district where you're having a multifamily housing development. So that, that's a more uniform across the city requirement. It just so happens to be in the specific plan area. And the other part I would add is that the BMR requirement is also citywide. And so the specific plan does not necessarily affect the entitlements in this particular case, other than I would say the sequel portion is already covered because the specific plan has accounted for development of housing units, including this site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And if I could ask the applicant to show the elevation that had the back of the building that she showed as part of her presentation?
I believe that I need to be given control again of the screen. Is that right, Matt?
If I may through the chair, I, I can have staff get that page up from the staff report. I just have to check the specific page number to get that right. But I believe that we have that, we have two elevations. One is color and one is black and white with different details provided, but we can pull that up.
Thank you. And specifically, I, I, as I'm going through the staff report in the packet, I don't see that particular, I didn't see at least, the particular elevation that was shown, the rendering that was shown by the applicant as part of the presentation in the pack. So I just, it may be a different one than is in the staff report. Yeah. Okay, you're, is it in, in fact, the staff report?
I think C twenty-two has that elevation.
Okay.
Page two thirty-four in your packet.
But that was a good one.
You have a color.
Was fine. Just going back to the presentation. What I'm trying to get at is, I want to see what, what it looks like facing the parking lot. I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about the prominence of the garage doors on it. Now, I get that it's a, it's facing a parking lot. So garage doors run with it. To the other side is much more, the penetration and modulation on the other side that faces the street is much more pronounced, but as it faces the parking lot. If I can just get a straight view of that. Okay, that's right there. Thank you. My, my concern and I, and according to how they articulated is the smoothness of the stucco. And, you know, what I see as a disappointment about Station thirteen hundred, whatever name it goes by now, is the smoothness of the stucco and the lack of interest in the residential portion of it. But I guess this doesn't suffer from that same thing because it has enough architectural elements associated with it. And and I guess the, the grides are pronounced because that's the backside. Okay, I just wanted to see that so I can get a sense of the this, so it didn't end up looking like a nineteen eighties one, you know, podium parked residential structure, which, which it doesn't. All right, so that was all I wanted to look at. Thank you all. I'll pass the cable back to the chair.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the commission that would like to make comments or questions? Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. It's it's a a bit of a challenge because it's tempting to consider this a larger project, even though it's only eight units. It's prominent, even though it's not actually on El Camino, it's very viewable from Ensenel. And it's part of the specific plan. So getting one look at it for architectural control, well, it may actually be a good idea to help us focus or help me focus. So first I wanted to just offer my appreciation that the design is, is not only well-placed in context with the San Antonio road architecture. It doesn't hesitate to go at least one step above, at least one step. I mean, when I see real divided light windows and real copper gutters, I am, am aware that the applicant intends to have a quality project. And that's a much appreciated goal. No doubt that reflects the history of the Beltramos here in our, in our town. I did read the comment from a San Antonio future neighbor who noted that the ground level is a bit plain, particularly for the everything but the middle two units. So I, I guess I respond to that with perhaps if we were working on this project or if this were a study session, we might ask if some additional interest could be placed on that lower level. I'm actually not inclined to challenge the architecture with this one review. And it may well be that the landscaping will provide enough interest so that the residents of San Antonio feel comfortable with the new, with the new shapes. I do have a question. I have two questions. One, could, could you point out on the site plan, the location of the bike parking for the residents?
Yes.
Matt, will you give us the, the site plan, please?
Yes, I apologize if I may through the chair. I'm working with staff now to have that sheet brought up, which is C seven in the staff report, the proposed site plan. And it has all the information on it. It should be up shortly.
So I think the guest parking would be most relevant, the guest bike, given that no doubt the resident spikes will simply go in the garage.
I'm going to, if I may through the chair, just show through my screen right now. Oh, thank, there we go. Sorry, got it up. So this is the, the sheet and question, and I'll leave it to the applicant team to describe where it is.
Sure. And so the bike parking for guests are, is on the lower right-hand corner of the building where the start of the drive aisle off of that easement is. So they're directly across the drive aisle from the guest parking is the trash enclosure. And so across the drive aisle on the lower right-hand corner is where we have guest, guest bike parking. I should also point out that we also have guest bicycle parking next to the entrance of the fifteen fifty El Camino Real office building as well.
So the reason that I ask is that if I bike over to see somebody in the unit to the furthest west or north on El Camino Real since but I'm going to be parking at the, leaving my bike at the opposite corner of the building?
Yes, that is where we have designated for the guest bike parking. The two-car private garages do provide ample storage space. So I would probably recommend that guests park their bikes within the garages. That's where I would keep my guest, my guest spike if I were to live here.
I would too, but if, if I were just coming over for lunch or for a meeting, a post-Zoom era meeting, could I also come up the entry balconies?
Yes, so the entry balcony, so the each entry front yard off of San Antonio, there, there's actually an enclosed yard as well. So it's kind of hard to see here without zooming in a little bit, Matt. But it would be behind a closed gate. So you could still pull your bike in to your friend's front yard, just behind the gate. You don't have to lock it up. So you could be directly at their unit.
So this makes sense to me. And I'll, I'll just say that although I'm glad there is a guest parking requirement, generally speaking, I sort of feel that it didn't really apply to this building. These are individual units. So I'll just throw out the comment that So I'll just throw out the comment that. I. I think perhaps in the future we could reconsider whether we even ask for guest parking. You know, given that it's a residential destination at ground floor. So thank you for helping me with that. And then the trash enclosure for the. Office space, I recognize that that is also the trash enclosure. I see the door opening onto the paved driveway. That is also the trash enclosure for the new residents.
Yes, and so when we spoke with Recology and received their feedback, we had a working session. With one of their operational deputies there and he preferred that we have one main door. That is accessed on the easement side where you see property line and Delta six. And so he requested that because. The trash collection trucks will enter the easement off of El Camino Real and drive north. Toward San Antonio Street that the truck would stop right in front of our trash enclosure. And be able to collect the trash from both the residential and the office building as well as directly across the easement from this location. Is the trash room for fifteen forty El Camino Real, the new development there. And so the Recology. Operations person recommended that this is the right configuration. From their perspective, and so this is what they approved. And we went back to our clients, the Bell Tramos, and they were amenable to the recommendations of Recology.
So one one stop for the trash truck and he could pull out. All the. Trash bins from our site and from the neighboring site to the right of this that is out on here.
Yeah, I I could certainly see the benefit to Recology. I didn't miss that. However. I can't help but think if I were in unit one or even unit two or three or four. The three or four trips a week that you make out to the exterior trash. Is a bit of a hike and. I would say April through October, that's. You know, just a little exercise, but. I guess this is the way it is sometimes with townhomes, but I thought. You know, more often than not, there was. There was a little more adjacency, but. I'll just make that observation that it seems challenging and if. The architects or the applicants would like to have some. Flexibility. Regarding our approval tonight. I would hate to hold. This design and the approval tonight to that one location of the trash that is so convenient for Recology. I mean, anywhere else that you have eight units, you have to stop eight times and that's just part of the deal. That's what they get paid for. So maybe somewhere in between. Alright, I don't really have any other comments and as Mr. DeCarty has. Pointed out before, we are limited in time. I'll just say I think this is a nice project and rather easy to support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have other commissioners that want to speak in the project? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. A question for the applicant and if the applicant could. Go to sheet R one hyphen one.
Once again, Commission of Barnes, we don't have control over the screen.
That's fine. If you we could both if technically we all can't get them together if the applicant can just reference that particular sheet. We can. I can look at mine. You can look at yours, everything.
Okay.
But it looks like we're progressing. So my question is. Related to. The landscaping. And as I look at. R one hyphen one and that view from Enzino. It is a high profile view and as I as I do a street view and I haven't seen the site, there's really not, there's not much. Certainly in the immediate vicinity, that's. You know, three stories, thirty-eight feet. Tell me a little bit about the landscaping between the improvements and Enzino. And as it relates to cutting down some of the sharpness or severity of that facade that faces Enzino. Did you contemplate putting in any type of trees with canopies? To give that to soften the view from Enzino as opposed to the. Low to the ground, what looks to be ornamental grasses. I certainly think that it would serve to soften the project and. Provide some texture to it. If you could talk about that, that'd be great.
Sure, I'm just pulling up our. Latest landscape plan.
And as Jennifer's pulling that up. For this sheet and it was different than what we showed you guys this evening. I think you're referring to the this. The upper left hand rendering. We did that so the commissioners could actually see what the elevation will look like. We are. Existing street trees along that frontage and you guys are here to look at the architecture and not the street trees. And so Jennifer will tell you exactly, but yes, we. Are providing. Additional trees that we are. There's already existing street trees, Richard Street Trees, and we're providing additional street trees. I don't know the exact names of them, but Jennifer will tell you. So, yes, yes, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, and so I'm looking at our planting plan, which should which should be included in your package. It's. Sheet L. For landscape L one point zero. And so. There we we see that there is. A large. Tree planned for. The. Planned for the end of the. Drive aisle. And. That tree is. The the lagers. Lagers to Stomiya Indica. And so it's tree number fifteen in our in our planting plan. Which is an existing tree to remain, and I think that the reason why we didn't. Plant more trees there is because the one at the end of the drive aisle is so large that the canopy. I would have to go back to our arborist and our landscape architect, but I I remember something about this tree being so. Substantial that they did not want to plant any other large trees. Close to it that would. Disturb it and so. The there is a row of deciduous trees between the pavers along the drive aisle, the residential drive aisle and. Along that demises the residential drive aisle from the commercial parking lot and so. So we do have some street tree or we do have a lot of trees. But that. Frontage specifically on the corner of Enzino and San Antonio, I think that was the reason why there was there were not additional. Large canopy trees added.
And that that also. And I'm sorry, if I go if I go back to R one one and I apologize, I I'm having a real. This is for staff like I never. Want to see an entire meetings worth of staff reports rolled into one. This is miserable. So I'll just I'll just go back. I'll try to to go to R one one in the lower right hand corner as we're talking about that. That. Landscape area that is between Enzino and and the building which has the ornamental grasses, you're saying along there, what we can't see. Is a street tree which is currently there, which would preclude you from. Although it's not represented here, it would preclude you from having something closer to the corner. Or that would break the the sheerness of the side of the building. Okay. And not being able to weigh in because I don't can't see the tree and, you know. Firsthand, I'll leave you with the thought that if you can add anything on there, whether it's more of a columnar type tree or not, certainly I'd consider that. In that area to break that. That's my thought.
Thank you. I will definitely take that comment back to our arborist and our landscape architect and see what else we can add.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Not seeing anyone. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Good, you saved me from it. Go ahead.
Was that me?
Yes.
Yes, so I will make a motion to approve her the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kennedy, seconds. I will call the roll. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
DeCarty?
Yeah, it's a nice project. Congratulations. Yes.
Harris?
Yes, thank you. Less parking, more housing. It looks terrific. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Yeah, I will add my own comment. I agree, less parking, more housing. I think it's a clever use of space and fill space and. I would like to see, you know, more projects like this around. Mental Park, we can certainly use the housing. So I'm going to vote yes as well. The application is approved as submitted with a vote of six in favor and one absence. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
So we'll move to the final item under the public hearing portion of our meeting. Remind everyone, we do have a rather large presentation item after this, so we still have a lot to get through tonight. Item F four is zoning ordinance text amendment by Cyrus Sanandaji, request for zoning ordinance text amendment to modify municipal code chapter sixteen point nine two. Signed outdoor advertising. The proposed text amendment includes eliminating the current square footage cap on the total sign area for certain larger projects. Then the SP. ECRD El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. And establishing new regulations to calculate permitted signage for certain projects in the SP ECRD zoning district. We have a staff report on this by Ms. Sandmeyer. Sandmeyer, did you have anything? Oh, well, before I go to you, I see we have hand raised by Commissioner Kennedy.
Yeah, unfortunately, I got my COVID booster this morning and when I stepped away earlier when my camera was off, I'm now spiking a temperature and I'm gonna have. Leave the meeting because I'm slowly feeling really terrible. I hate to do it. I stayed on as long as I could, so I'm sorry, but I have to.
Well, we certainly understand and we have a core without you, so thanks for hanging this long and good night.
Right, thank you.
Take care. Um. So we have a staff report from Ms. Sandmeyer. Do you have anything to add to that or? Any corrections?
No, no additions or corrections to the report. I'm happy to answer questions.
We have any questions on the staff reports? I'm not seeing any. I think this is a subject which should be pretty fresh in everyone's mind. But I will see if the. Applicant wants to speak more on this before we go to public comments. It's just Sanandaji.
Good evening, commissioners and Happy New Year. I know we were together not more than a few weeks ago. Going over this very topic during the second study session. In the interest of time and given that very little has. Evolved since that discussion. To the extent that Chair Doran is in agreement, I'm happy to go straight to public comment, but to the extent that any commissioners have. Questions or would like to refresh. Any part of the discussion that we previously had, I'm more than happy to jump into it. This presentation is the presentation that was previously shown. At the last study session.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission before we go to public comments? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised from the public at this time?
I do not see any hands raised at this time. Just as a reminder, if you do wish to provide public comment on this item. Please click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or if you are calling in and wish to give comment. Press star nine on your phone and that will let us know you have. A comment. As a reminder, each speaker will have one opportunity to speak during public comment.
Now, let's go just a minute.
And Chair Doran, as we await to see if there's anybody with comment, the one point of clarification, there was feedback that we received from. The city attorney as we looked at the specific text of the amendment that provided some clarification that we. Should not distinguish the difference between project identity signage and other signage for. The tenants themselves. And so there was a slight tweak to the language that's proposed from a legal perspective that has been vetted through. The city attorney's office and my colleague Steve Atkinson as well, so. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission, see if anyone has anything further to say on this amendment. Commissioner. Barnes, I think you were first.
I'm happy to if someone else was. I'll go if. If I was first, and well, I don't mean to block anyone else out. Okay, so if the. I'll address this to the to you, Chair Dorn, and you can advise what you think staff should do or the applicant, but I would would like to hear on. Page pages. Pages on marked. The within.
One way to reference them is the page in the PDF, you know, page three hundred and fifty-two or whatever.
Thank you. So it's three, four, six. In the PDF. And what it does reference on that page. Under project description, it says, since the last study session, the applicant has revised the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, including the following revisions, and it's got four bullet points. If someone would be so kind as to walk verbally through. What those four bullet points contain in terms of what the revisions were made since we last saw it would help me just to understand the progression.
I think we might ask the city attorney. I see we have Miss Dory here. Maybe she's the best person to respond to that.
Thank you, Chair. I I will first let Ms. Sandmeyer. Describe the changes. They don't all relate to revisions that we made. To ensure that the ordinance was is compliant with Supreme Court principles on content based sign regulations and then I will. Chime in with with that explanation if that's okay with you, Chair Dorn.
Certainly, Ms. Sandmeyer. Certainly. Ms. Sandmeyer?
Yes, so there were some changes, but the overall amount of signage should be roughly equal to what would have been allowed under the previous proposal heard in December. So there were some, there was some language added on the process for master sign program review, allowing the planning commission some flexibility from the design guidelines as desired. The restriction on project identification signage was eliminated. That would have prevented the use of consumer product or corporate identity. And that has to do with the First Amendment issues that were mentioned. And then the project identification and directional signage allowance was replaced with additional signage based on gross floor area of the project. But again, that's intended to reach roughly the same amount of signage. And then the limit on office tenant signage was changed to instead be a limit on upper-level commercial signage for buildings with a mixture of office and other commercial uses. And that had to do with First Amendment issues. And also, I believe that was an issue raised by planning commissioners in the study sessions. I think that addressed two things. The applicant's massing studies are the same. It's, their proposal works under both, both proposals, both this one and the one that was presented in December. So I hope that helps a little bit.
If I may, through, through the chair, to, to have a couple of questions on that. On the first one, I guess in language that an average resident would understand, what is the process for the planning commission? What's the interaction that the planning commission has as it relates to approval for signage as contemplated in this?
Yes, so that, any signage that goes beyond the 100 feet permitted currently for a primary frontage or 50 for a secondary would have a master sign program reviewed by the planning commission. And the planning commission would review it for conformance with the design guidelines, but there would be some flexibility as the commission desires. So that's, the new language would be section 69.92.11010. And that explains it a little bit. And that's just above that section. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's at a different, different location. But it's, it's the last section of the proposed text.
So at the risk of paraphrasing you, beyond, beyond certain for, for, for square footage that is above benchmark levels, it will look to the planning commission for review, much like a use, in, in the same sense that discretionary approval by the planning commission below those thresholds, it's a what? Ministerial approval for signage that is in conformance with what's laid out in terms of what you can do for signs? Does that sound about right?
Well, so that, that amount of signage currently allowed is reviewed ministerially. But that's, that wouldn't apply to these larger projects because they need this additional signage that would be allowed through this amendment. So those types of projects would go to the planning commission, where the commission would review the master sign program. And that could also be a way for the applicant to ask for exceptions to the design guidelines, sign design guidelines, which adds a little bit of flexibility. But it would also ensure kind of an overall cohesive look after being reviewed by the planning commission.
So the applicant will come, will, will have design guidelines. They will mark to design guidelines. Wherever it deviates from this design guidelines, that's an area where there will be discretionary way in by the planning commission as to those areas. But should, does that sound about right?
Um, yes, but even if it, if a sign program met all the design guidelines, it would still be reviewed by the planning commission. Because it would be for a larger project, so it wouldn't be a ministerial approval.
And then can I ask the thesis behind it? I thought that we had left the last meeting, and I may have misunderstood this, with a desire for there to be transparency in the process. So that, as long as something conforms to the design guidelines, it would be approved. But is that not the case? Because if it's bigger stuff, then the owner should be back on the planning commission to weigh in about its preferences. Is that the central thesis for, for, for why if it conforms to design guidelines, we still have to see it?
Yeah, and I think individual sign could conform to the design guidelines, but not provide a cohesive look for the signage for a large development. Because the design guidelines are more about specific, what, what's allowed on a specific sign, but it less so about creating a cohesive look for all the signs on the property.
Do we, do we know what Redwood City or Palo Alto does in terms of approving, like having planning commission? They've got, you know, an ARB, and they've got, you know, planning and transportation. Do you have any sense of what other jurisdictions do in terms of weighing in on signs for projects by planning commissions?
Yeah, definitely. Let me see. I think, I believe Palo Alto does have review where the total area of the signage could also be reduced in size. I think Redwood City, some of it is ministerial.
So I, I think Mr. Sanandaji is wanting to say something here. I'd like to give him the opportunity to reject.
Right, let me just, and I'm sorry, let me, I apologize. Just to finish where I have the floor. I guess, yeah, I'm, so I'm not going to die on this hill, but I, I certainly have some frustration in terms of not trying to make this more difficult. But at the same time, thinking that we, that I, I thought that we left this with trying to create transparency in the process and having planning commission weigh in, well, planning commission does weigh in on development standards and not, you know, picking signs, picking, having preferences which affect commercial signage in our, you know, commercial corridor. So that's, that's what I'm driving at. And then I'll, I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes, I think the, the, if I may, to add a little bit of nuance to the, to the response. So I think the idea is that once the master sign program has been adopted, at that point, it's ministerial as we swap out tenant signage and so on over the life of the project. But until the master sign program has been adopted, and that could happen concurrently with the overall approval of the project initially. I think our project is a little bit unique in the sense that this is happening so far down the road after the project's already been built essentially. But the idea being that once you approve the project, you can simultaneously approve the, the master sign program that is the one discretionary sort of cohesive design review approval the planning commission provides. And then thereafter, it's just about conforming to that moving forward. And the, the amendment that we are proposing provides for an objective standard vis a vis the, the square footage and the placement of those signs and so on, that would then govern and control beyond that. And so the, the discretion is more so around, I think, some comments that were made about, you know, as an example, having it blend more seals into the architecture as opposed to contrast and so on. And I think that needs to be picked up, not in the, in the, in the text of the, the amendment itself. It, it's not coming necessarily, that's more of a design review component. And that's what we understand to be the master sign program review and approval by the planning commission. And it, it, to a certain degree, is discretionary from a look and feel standpoint, but it's still objective in that there are standards, there are formula as to what would govern the square footage and the placement and the types of signs or the location of signs that we could have. So it is trying to create that transparency, but ultimately providing that one-time safety net, I think, for the planning commission to, to be able to establish a master sign program that's consistent with the look and feel of the project.
I'd actually like to ask a follow-up to Ms. Sandmeyer on the bullets that Commissioner Barnes was asking about. The second bullet, eliminate the restriction on project identification signs that would prevent the use of generally known, oh, sorry. The, the third bullet, eliminate the exclusion exemption concept for project identification and directional signage. Is this a First Amendment issue that we can't allow extra footage for an exit sign or a one-way-only sign or something like that?
It wouldn't be, I believe, anything related to safety, like an exit sign, that can be exempt, and that's fine. It's more like the large spring line sign, something like that. Where the city has been regulating the content and can sit, you know, says it, this is, spring line sign is okay, but you can't have a sign for the name of a restaurant or something like that.
Okay, I understand that. I, I guess I'm so confused by bullet point three that says, you know, the concept for project identification and directional signage. So, you know, I, I'm, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is there a First Amendment issue with saying you can't have a one-way-only or, you know, exit-only sign on the garage or something like that?
Through the chair, I'm, I'm happy to respond. And I see Mr. Atkinson is also available for questions. He's reviewed the same cases that I have. So we, we made a few changes, proposed changes, including those that you just identified in the second and third bullet. And, and those changes primarily seek to ensure that the regulations that are being proposed are not based on the category of signs, right? So if you need to read the sign to determine what regulations would apply to it, there's a presumption that the sign is then content-based, and there's a presumption that the content-based sign would be unconstitutional and subject to heightened scrutiny in order for it to be constitutionally valid. There are exceptions to this principle for size and, and for size of signs and location. Those are generally considered not content-based. And so the, the changes that we made with respect to the second and third bullets seek to ensure that, that we are not promulgating any content-based regulations.
So I, I understand the content-based regulation. I understand the second bullet and the problem with prohibiting, you know, consumer product or corporate entity identification. I get that. I, I'm able to probably the directional signage. You can't have a one-way-only sign. You know, I, I, I just can't see a First Amendment issue with that. And Mr. Atkinson's dying to get in on this. So let me see what he has to say on it.
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Doran. So I think a little background, and I know it's late, but I think this will put this all in context. So in our prior proposal, we had an exclusion, an exemption really, for directional signage and for project identification signage. The, the project identification signage notably was the big arch spring line sign over the, over the main entry corridor. And most of the area that we had covered by that exemption was to be from this spring line, you know, project identification sign. As I understood from reviewing the case and dealing with the city attorney's office, we probably could have done an exemption for the purely directional signage like parking entry. Okay, we could have kept that as an exemption, but we couldn't have been able to exclude the spring line project identification sign. I, I believe that's correct. And so rather than kind of split this exemption up, so we had a small exemption for the directional signage and then had a separate dealing with the spring line project identification sign area separately, we just decided that to try to come up with another formula that would give us approximately the same amount of signage as we have shown in the diagrams. So we created this provision which gave us an additional signage allocation based on the commercial square footage of the project. I can, I can explain that further, but does that answer your question?
I mean, presumably, there's, there are regulatory requirements that you've got a, a sign for the exit and entrance to the parking garage so people don't get in the wrong, wrong lane. I'm, I think I'm good with that, and I, I do want to move on. So I, I think Commissioner Riggs, your hand is on the left, so I think you won the person, the fastest hand contest.
Um, I, actually, I'm not sure if I was ahead of Commissioner Harris, so I would yield to Commissioner Harris.
Okay. Commissioner Harris, thank you for waiting so patient.
Oh, no, no. Commissioner Riggs was, did have his hand faster than mine, so I yield to him.
Go and talk.
Okay, I'll talk. First, I'm more than a little disappointed. This is not the first time Menlo Park has had a legal review that has cut the legs out of the function of a, 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 a city effort. I realize that this is not a matter of the messenger. It's a matter of, in this case, Supreme Court decisions and how they're published. But we had a couple of goals when we discussed this previously. One was to allow a project sign to not compete with tenant signage. And I think that was a valid intent. It's, uh, to quote Commissioner Barnes, I'm not going to die on that hill, but I do feel strongly about top-of-building signage. And I don't think that's a content-based issue at all. If necessary, I would suggest that we be so specific as to say, anything in the top 50% of the bulk height of the building shall be limited to no more than one sign per 50,000 square feet or no more than one sign per 100,000 square feet of project. Because what I don't want to see is along the parapet, all along this extensive frontage, to see West Elm, Tony's Pizzeria, Jimmy's Auto Repair, and six other names all strung out on the top of the building. That's not what the tops of buildings in Menlo Park or any other city should look like. Those signs should be limited to the level of their tendency, which typically for retail is going to be first level. And there are office spaces above. And, you, you know, even a 10,000-square-foot building, such as 1706 El Camino or 1906 El Camino, could have three, even four tenants. And if all of them want their names on the top of the building, I don't see approving that. I just don't. So if legally, we cannot separate the top of the building from the bottom of the building, and if legally, we cannot separate directional signage from tenant and sponsorship, sponsorship signage, then I say we don't increase the square footage of the signage at all and that everything above that square footage require approval by the planning commission in a hearing or serious adherence. So let's get serious about what regulations, what format we're going to put down. I'm with Mr. Barnes that there should be some clear rules and that the building developer, building management, Building management and tenants should all be able to guess what their approvable signage should be and where it should be. But if I'm being told that legally, we are hamstrung from doing that, then I'm not in support of this effort.
I see Mr. Atkinson. Wanting to respond, so let's hear what he has to say on this.
So thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Couple of things. First, on. And it may have been missed. So we do have a. A restriction on upper level signage. And it basically says that on on the El Camino frontage. No more than one half a square foot. Of sign per per foot of frontage. Can be above the ground level of the building and you didn't mention that in your. Comments. I wanted to make sure that you understood that that was still in there. So. So again, because of the. Concerns that the city attorney raised on content based restrictions. Previously, we had had a restriction on office signage, which again, we thought was probably going to occur on the upper levels. And we changed that to a restriction on. Upper level signage at the ratio that I just talked about. So I. Does that answer part of your question? And and again, so because we felt like we could not. Because of restriction between office and retail signage. Would be content based, we felt like we would instead have the restriction on upper level signage. So in other words. For our El Camino frontage. Of all the signage that we have, only a little over 200 square feet can be above the ground level of the building. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware. Of that in here, and if that addresses your concern.
Of the total allowable signage, what is 200 square feet? Is that eight percent?
Well, our total signage on El Camino. Based on the length of the frontage is 540 square square feet. Okay? And then the, in addition, we have the additional allocation of signage based on area. Of a little over 200 square feet of which we are using most of that for project. For the project identification signage and the directional signage. So. We're talking about in our, and I don't have our diagram, our table open. But we have approximately 300 square feet of signage that we're showing. You know, for ground level retail. I mean, for ground level uses and then about 200 square feet. On El Camino for upper level uses and the project intends. To basically use that in a way that there would be. And Cyrus, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I I think we're planning to have. Two upper level office signs, I mean, two upper level signs. On each of the two El Camino office buildings, the two office buildings facing El Camino.
Consistent with the massing that we had shared during the second session, that's correct. And just for context, Commissioner Riggs, the. Archway, the spring line, so the project identity signage on just the archway alone is slightly above 200 square feet. To for for relative to the proportion. And that. Is also included in that calculation because it can't. Be just according to this recent interpretation or this interpretation of the Supreme Court case. We couldn't distinguish that from from the rest of the signage.
I'm sorry, you mean the spring line can't be distinguished from the rest of the total signage or from the upper level or from the lower level? We need to be more clear.
Okay, the the. The spring line sign by its physical location. Is upper level signage because of, you know, just where it it's where it has to be in terms of the arch. And we have a specific provision that says that the spring line sign itself or or I'm sorry, project identification signage. Is exempt from the restriction on. Upper level signage. So in other words, the upper level signage that will be allowed. Is approximately 200 square feet, which would be for commercial signage and then another. It's approximately 200 square feet for the spring line arch sign. Which would be physically upper level signage. You know, by its location, but is specifically called out in the. Regulation as being allowed as an exception to the upper level signage limit.
If if calling it upper level creates this. Competition, why aren't we calling it parapet signage that we limit? Parapet signage is a common phrase. It's got to be 100 years old. Can we limit parapet signage? I mean, that this is what I've been driving at for three meetings. Can we limit parapet signage? Is there any legal reason we cannot limit parapet signage? I I would be very surprised if there's a legal reason we cannot limit parapet signage and square footage compared with ground level.
I am not aware that there's any such limit.
Agreed. But I'd also want, I I'd want our planners to. Way in on the scope of such signage.
So let me just mention here that that our limit on, this is a three story building. So we have a ground level. And then we have two stories above that. So our limit on upper level signage would apply to anything above the ground level, which would include, but not be limited to the parapet.
Again, i- if it forces spring line. Monument sign to be or arch sign. To be in competition with or fungible with the. Parapet signage, I cannot support that and I don't know why building management would want that. They have to be separate.
No, I, yeah, I'm sorry. There is no competition. The way that we have this allowed. Is that the spring line sign. Coexists. It doesn't take away from the other signage.
And this is acceptable legally. Through the chair, Ms. Doherty, is that okay to have the spring line signage be? Half of the 400 square feet of so called upper level signage and reserved?
Well, I I I'm not sure I'm follow. I think your question is. More of an ads applied question than it is a question as to the constitutionality of the provisions that that we're considering. So I. I'm not sure that I am the best suited to answer that question in terms of the regulations that are being proposed right now.
Well, this was introduced, I I mean, early on. Our. Our staff. Member and and senior member. Indicated that directional. Project ID and tenant signage cannot be segregated and distinguished. And so we are working back from that restriction. And. We have subsequently. Heard indications that, well, yes, probably directional signage could be in a separate square footage budget. I personally think it could also be. Anything other than vertical directional signage, I I hope is excluded. In other words. Painting on the ground. But. Project directional signage, if that can be separate. If we can just dispose of this phrase. Upper level signage and. You know, it. If if you want two tacos and a hamburger, you shouldn't say, well, I'd like to have a budget for. Hispanic inspired food that is different from, you know, you just say what you want. And if we'd like to limit parapet signage, I would like to give a. Budget to parapet signage. If we want. Project identifying. Signage. And are having difficulty defining that. We can say. A sign. Over the primary entry that identifies the project as a whole, and that does not sound like a text base based issue. And then we can have retail signage. That is on the facade or within. You know. Eight foot vertical and. 50 foot horizontal of the tenancy or major entrance to the tenancy. I mean, we can be specific and say what we're doing here. I thought we all had, that is, the commission had presented a goal. That we would like the tenants. To have a reasonable budget. And know that budget in advance. Have a good sized budget so they they could each have a sign. Depending on how much the. Ground level is divided up. And that we would like to restrict the parapet signage. For the sake of overall appearance of the building and our street frontage. And I think we should be able to do that. By stating it a bit more directly. Unless I'm missing something, the concept of lower signage and upper signage is not helping us.
So I agree with you, Commissioner Riggs, on the parapet signage. I'm. Not certain I'm in complete agreement on the remainder of your suggestions. With respect to specifying the. Project. Or or the the entity. On the street level signage. I think I'd want to think about that a bit more, but yes, I'm I am in agreement. I believe, and I want to look to Karina and make sure she's also in agreement. On the parapet signage.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I think we could definitely limit parapet signage. And we didn't know in the staff report, the previous feedback from the commission about signage above the first floor. However, this is just what the applicant submitted to us and it can certainly be refined. Through the review of the commission.
Okay, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair Doran. I apologize if we had misunderstood something. We had thought that the commission's concern. Was about all signage above the ground floor. And I'm I'm the focus of Commissioner Riggs today has been specifically on. The parapet. I believe that we had intended our. Upper level signage. In our diagrams to be located at the at the parapet level. But, you know, I I didn't think that we necessarily. Would, it's conceivable that a second floor office tenant, for example, might like his sign at the second floor where his space is. And. I've actually been trying to reach Cyrus, but Cyrus, do we have any problem with changing our. Limit on upper level signage to a equivalent language limit on. Signage just at the parapet level, because that may well work.
Candidly, it it would work for our project, but the goal is just to. Remind everyone is is that this really wasn't intended to be. A set of modifications specifically tailored to spring line. We were going to revisit. The commission with our specific master sign program and proposal. And so. In conjunction with and and through the discussions that we had with Stanford. And contemplating what potential. Future development may come that that would be impacted by these modifications. I could certainly see a scenario in which building architecture would would. Really. Require signage to not be at the parapet level, but rather. Sort of in the mid, you know, whether it's the second floor or otherwise. And that being a more appropriate application. So we didn't want to be prescriptive and try to to write something that that. Really only solved our issue, but really we're. The tip of the spear in terms of being able to come up with modifications that would more broadly and appropriately apply to the to the entire area. And for all projects. So that that would be my only qualifier. Selfishly speaking, it would work perfectly fine for our program. As we've shown you with our proposed massing for our signage. But for other projects, including Stanford's, I believe that. That would create. Some concern particularly vis a vis. The placement of the project ID and and otherwise that wouldn't just cleanly be at the top of the ground plane. Meaning top of the entrance to the to the ground floor retail or or otherwise commercial and then parapet.
With apologies to Ms. Harris, I'll just briefly say. I. I was considering other projects, even quoting a couple of projects that were as small as 10,000 square feet, which probably wouldn't even fall under this large project thing. So. I I do think that that's been considered, but I have a follow up suggestion. But after Ms. Harris gets a chance to speak or others.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris has been waiting very patiently now, so let's.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to just say thank you to Mr. Sunandaji and Atkinson for all the work that you put in on this. I know that you have spent a lot of time. It's a lot of work. The visual, the analysis, the zoning wording. I know it's a lot of work. And I I do, I know we all appreciate it. I had just the. Tiniest question, I think. That I think I didn't understand, so maybe just a quick clarification. And I I actually am happy with the 50%. Or the one half for the second or. Floors or above ground level floors, but the the second, this one bullet, we're eliminating the restriction of a project identification signage that would prevent the use of a generally known consumer product or corporate identity. I got confused by the word generally known. And I'm just wondering, I I couldn't, I couldn't find or I couldn't understand the actual wording of the change. And I just wanted to make sure that. A generally known consumer product or identity. I didn't want that to be treated differently than a new. Company or corporation or a new. A new brand. And I didn't, I, so that kind of confused me a little bit.
I see once again, Mr. Atkinson. Really would like to hear from the city attorney on these questions. But I'll give Mr. Atkinson the first shot since he's got his hand up.
So so the language that you're referring to was part of the exclusion that we had before. For project identification signage. And the issue we saw in drafting that. Was suppose, and you know, we've called the project spring line, which I'm, you know, is not kind of like a well known. Commercial project or other business that I'm aware of. Okay? We were concerned that that there that someone might think that there would be a circumstance where you could have a project like this. And instead of a name like. Spring line, which doesn't have larger commercial meaning. That some big company would come along and instead of having an arch that said spring line. They could have an arch that said Bank of America Plaza or. You know, Safeway Plaza or something like that. And we assumed that people would say, well. Gee, when you're having your project identification be the name of a project like that, it's really advertising. So so that's why that was in there to begin with. And when we changed from an exemption for project identification. And directional to this additional allocation, that became irrelevant. And also. In our discussions with the city attorney's office, we thought that. An exclusion that said, oh, you can exclude project ID, but not if it's a well known commercial name. Would violate. Would violate the content base, the restriction on content based. Distinctions. So I hope. That, does that answer your question? So in other words, this this distinction that we were making before became irrelevant. Uh, it was both, it was both something that had problems from a content based perspective. But it also became irrelevant when we switched from a exemption for project identification sign to this additional allocation of area.
Okay, thank you. I was just a little confused by the wording of the bullet points.
It is easily to imagine how that could happen.
All right, well, thank you. That's. That's really helpful. I think in general, we want to support retail businesses and. Support and not disadvantage them with businesses in Mellow Park versus other areas. So thank you so much again.
We have other commissioners that would like to speak on this. Application for this amendment. Commissioner DeCarty.
I've spoken before, I'll be brief on where I was last time. I think this is a mistake in the direction. I really appreciate everything the applicant's done. I really appreciate working to make this work better. Um, I'm, I'm further along on the restriction restriction, uh, trajectory than Commissioner Riggs is. And I am there for this reason. We, as a community, have to do more development, have to do more infill development. We're going to end up having larger buildings downtown. There's going to be a huge fight that's going to happen right off of Santa Cruz in that plaza back there. And that's going to make a lot of people in our community frustrated. They're losing the look and feel of a small town community. We can design buildings better in order to be able to address that. Um, but if we allow signage that looks like the signage that you can see from the highway or like. Um, the hotel and legal complex that's right there at the University Avenue exit on 101. Um, then that's going to wreck that feeling of a smaller community. So by an accident here, well, we've got a restriction that I agree is too restrictive and unfair relative to other property owners. We have the opportunity to correct this over time, be able to get the signage that actually fits the look and feel of the community. And in the end, would be supportive of what we have to do with greater density to have better housing in these areas, exactly what we're talking about. Um, so that's why I'm going to vote against this, and I just wanted to lay out my principles so I was clear.
Thank you. So Commissioner Riggs, did you want to make a proposal? If anything further to say?
Yes, thank you. Um, and. Since there's more than one of us that is concerned about over signage. I think. While I absolutely agree with Mr. Barnes that we need to have. Rules that can be read and followed. Um, and predicted. I think it it may be wise for us to augment the signage allowance. Here. This. Project signage project clearly was needed. And again, I'll add my thanks to the Springline group for stepping forward to do it. Do it for us, the city. I think increasing it to allow for the retail signage at retail level. Perhaps should be as far as we should go. And then we should allow for project identif- special project identification signage, overall project identification signage. To be. A discretionary. Review process. And I think that's the only way that we can separate it. Without running into legal issues. And. And so tenants and building management have some rules to play with. And the original development would be handled separately, the way we handle other. Issues upon initial development. So I'd be interested through the chair if Mr. Sanandaji could work with that. And if he thinks. That. Is an overall viable approach to large projects.
Mr. Sanandaji would like to respond to that.
Cyrus, you're muted.
Thank you for that. Sorry, my audio had cut out a little earlier. I had to switch to my phone. I apologize, Commissioner Harris. I lost the last part of your your comment there. And happy to circle back to Commissioner Riggs. If I understood your. Proposal, which was to create. Or to limit the modification to create an objective standard for. Purely ground floor level signage, which would be applicable for to retailer, commercial uses on the ground floor. Uh, and then have a purely discretionary. Process for. Any upper level signage essentially, whether it be.
No, no, that's not at all. That's not even close to what I want to try to achieve. I apologize. I think we we are best served by taking the phrase upper level out of the dictionary here. I think. We want to increase the signage allowance so that it's reasonable and proportional for retail signage at the retail level. And let's say at the retail level, because, for example, at the Oak Grove, and you have retail at the second level. And we want to put a maximum. Amount of signage at the parapet. And then the third element would be the overall project ID signage, which. Could have potentially a budget, but is. Uh, discretionary approval. And. We could call it additional. Overall project identification and perhaps. Ms. Doherty can. Lend an opinion on whether that has. Uh, any conflict with. Content based signage, but if we can separate that and have the other two be budgets. Then at least we have the two budgets clear and nailed down. And I I think I can have faith that overall project identification signage, like the Springline signage. Is not going to find objections from a a future planning commission where some would. Because that's part of supporting an incoming project.
I appreciate the the. Clarification there. If that's the case, and so long as there are clear. Uh, formulas that based on project size, whether it's linear footage or otherwise, that we can. Uh, have a clear understanding as to what the allowance of signage is that can then be parsed between. The uses, so parapet and and retail as an example, then. I would feel comfortable, uh, based on the assessment of our project and and the assessment. Uh, of the hypothetical projects that we've thought about as we've. Come together with the Stanford team and and others to propose these, uh, this language, uh, that that would work and. Candidly, I would have anticipated that the planning commission's review of the master signage program would have essentially impaled. Uh, a review of the entirety of the composition of the signage being proposed. And so if we're saying that there's a formulate component for retail or or sort of call it ground level commercial and then parapet. And really the subjective component comes both in terms of. Location and and maybe size of other signage, uh, then that's sort of negotiated and and. From a design standpoint and proposed. Through that discretionary review process and adoption or approval of the master signage plan. Uh, per project, I think that would be. From our perspective as a project sponsor, I think that would be viable for all future. Large developments.
Well, that's, that's good to hear, and and I hope that the result will be that rather than waiting for the master signage program. Uh, building management will be able to go ahead and. And tell West Elm, and by the way, you have so many square feet of signage available. Rather than we'll know in October of 2023.
And my suggestion to that end, actually, and I'm not sure. What the process would look like, but, you know, in other jurisdictions, we spend a lot of time developing. A proposed hypothetical signage plan, because retail spaces are generally located in certain areas and. You know, there are only certain areas on the parapets where you'd likely place, you know, commercial signage and so on. And then the project identity will be there regardless of the tenancy. And so you could propose essentially that master signage plan as part of the original proposal, and so it's approved concurrently. Uh, it's not, it doesn't lag so far behind as as our project has in in this instance because of the absence of these rules. But if you can, during the design process, come up and and to Commissioner DeCarty's point, as you're designing these buildings. Do it in a in a tasteful way, meaning not just the building form and mass and aesthetic and so on, but also the signage. So it's integrated, uh, and done in one go. I think that's where we can hopefully get the best outcomes collectively as a city, as a community.
I think that's an actual, uh, uh, an excellent intent. Um, although having the generator enclosures approved with the initial.
Without the use.
You would also have been a general intent, yes. And so Cyrus, could I ask? Would you also propose for the parapet limitations? It's not really square footage, I think, and and I can ask Mr. DeCarty, Mr. Doran, what they feel, but. To me, it's really how many signs? So, for example, on a given, a given building mass, it would be nice not to have more than one sign. On that. You know, you hate to have the east face of a building, say Bank of America, and the west face, say Orbit Technologies. So your suggestion on that would be appreciated.
If I could ask Steve to kindly clarify what is currently proposed, because I do believe that. Again, if we're to consider the variety of projects that that this may apply to. Stanford has a an extremely long frontage. And really the intent was to limit the number of parapet signs. As a function of of the length of the 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 frontage that each project has. It would not be uncommon, and I think it would actually, for aesthetic purposes, be more balanced. Uh, if. The major frontages had one parapet sign on each corner that would then anchor that elevation. Stanford, as an example, with their project, uh, and the 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 length of that primary facade may may want more than. Uh, three, and and the formula may may allow for that, and it may look visually. Consistent with with sort of the overall intent of what, uh, the planning commission and planning department is is going to want to implement relative to these modifications. So I think limiting to one doesn't necessarily achieve the goal of of having. You know, appropriate signage limitations. I think the formula, Steve can recite it for us. Sought to.
If I can interrupt. If I can interrupt, uh, I think the way I phrased it was preferably one per building mass. And, for example, Stanford has at least ten El Camino building front corners. It's, even though it's a very long frontage. It's a matter of signage per parapet mass, and there there are a number of masses among their, what is it, five buildings? And. And you also have, uh, actually by specific plan intent, you have more than one parapet mass. Because that's what the major modulations are for, is to break it up. So that that was my sort of hint and suggestion was that per building mass, which is under 100 feet, as I recall. You wouldn't have both. Cypress Technologies and Bank of America.
Understood, and thank you for that clarification.
All right, before we go in for the, I want to see if I can clarify one thing. Uh, I think the proposal from Commissioner Riggs was a limit on the. Ground floor level signs, the retail signage, and the separate limit on parapet signage. And then have a discretionary approval for project signage. And as it was enumerated by Mr. Sanandaji, I think it was a little bit different. Uh, the proposal was a limit on the retail signage, limit on the parapet signage, and then discretionary approval for all other signage. So I think there's a little bit of difference between those two characterizations. And I'm wondering if the city attorney has anything to say on that. If we're allowed to provide an extra discretionary. Uh, signage allowance if it's for project identification, or if that, again, runs into First Amendment problems.
I I think there's a way that we can structure it. To accomplish what's being recommended here. I I'm not sure that we're going to be able to craft that language. At this hearing, that's something that I I will want to go back and work with staff on and work with Mr. Atkinson on. But I, but I think that there is probably a way that we can accomplish that in a manner that's content neutral.
Okay, thank you. Um, now it's Commissioner Barnes who's been waiting patiently, so we'll give him a chance to speak.
Actually, I appreciate all the commentary. So I have a couple of thoughts. My first thought is, I certainly am not in the role of sticking up for. Uh, Mr. Sanandaji and Mr. Atkinson, but I want to ask the question as to whether. You're getting what you need for your project. And I say that against the landscape of what I think is just a hard process that we're in. I hear you toggling between what might work for your project. And then adding in what might work for Stanford, and then a hypothetical project on Santa Cruz and other locations. And I think just the nature of this discussion from the outset is you're litigating what was going to. Work for your project, and at the same time, you've got unrepresented parties in this meeting. Looking for a solution across a number of use cases, and it just, to me, keeps getting, you know. Commingled and and. And I don't think we're doing a service to the process or to you or future developments. So I'm wondering, and I'll ask through the chair. Can we make this a two-step process? Like, can we just hear what is going to work for Springline, for this project? And then through an administrative process, have, I don't know how this would work from a mechanic standpoint, but we approve for Springline. And then we have a provision in what gets approved that it's part of a. Future determination on what it looks like across the entire downtown specific plan, because. I don't, I think we're we're arguing two sets, we're arguing too many hypotheticals. And I don't think we're going to get there, and I think I would be more comfortable with what's we're going to work for Springline, what's the best practice? And then have the parties who then have Stanford, if they have something to say, have them show up at this meeting. If we've got someone on Santa Cruz Avenue that is contemplating a development, have them show up and have them have. A stakeholder in a voice in this discussion. I think it's too complicated, and I would suggest that we decide the Springline, we make a recommendation, and that becomes a baseline for a further plan that gets. Discussed for the town, for the entire downtown specific plan, because I think this is a, is is not a productive process. And the fact that we're at it in the third meeting and still having to cook and bake and reword and retweak without hearing from the parties that are involved in this. I don't think it works, so. I don't think it works. So may I ask through the chair to the city attorney, is there a path where we can bifurcate this into two parts? Project-specific, something tentative, then come back and have this be a reasoned discussion across the entire downtown specific plan? Curia says that if there's any way forward on that.
Yeah, we could, we couldn't, we can have a more, a narrower scope of application of the ordinance so that it would apply not throughout the entire specific plan.
Thank you for that. And I, so I'm going to look. So from a mechanic standpoint, may I make a, so I guess I'll look to the chair. What would that look like? And how do I, do I make a motion? Or should I put up for discussion that we discuss bifurcating these two and do it one and doing two and see if there's an appetite for that? Make a motion to that effect, see, certainly look here from other commissioners.
Yeah, you know, the agenda item is a recommendation to City Council for actual ordinance. So, you know, I think if you want a different ordinance, then we'll have, we'll need some specificity on what that ordinance is. And I think that it might be difficult to draft on the fly here in the meeting.
But it's not, sorry, is not the ordinance that we passed today specific for Spring Line? And then can we not have it be not for the entire downtown specific plan? And then we come back and look at the downtown specific plan.
I'd like to hear what the city attorney says on that, but I think we have a problem with spot zoning. Ordinance applies only to this development, although for the city attorney on that.
So a, a couple of things, I, yeah, I'm not sure about a spot zoning issue as it relates just to signage, but yes, that's a good suggestion of something that we would look into. I, I think for tonight, a bigger issue is we have a text amendment that the applicant has applied for and proposed. And the planning commission is to make a recommendation on that text amendment, and the city council makes a determination on it. And so that the amendment that's been proposed by the applicant will go forward to the planning commission with or without a recommendation.
The blame will be on the city council.
Thank you. We'll go forward to the city council with a recommendation in favor or a recommendation again, or a recommendation in opposition by the planning commission. And so I, I think that some of the suggestions being made tonight are certainly, you know, useful and helpful to the applicant to assess whether or not they want to go forward to the, to the council without a planning commission recommendation. But if we do want to bifurcate the process, then that's not necessarily something that the applicant is going to propose. That would be something that the planning commission would ask the city council to consider and come back with.
Thank you. And I certainly wonder if there's any appetite from my fellow commissioners to have the vote tonight be specifically to Spring Line, so we can get through that. And then other voices who are vested in the signage plan for downtown specific plan, that can be a separate process, but using, you know, the work product that we're doing at this point in time. That's my question, and I'll leave it to my other commissioners.
Okay, I do want to let Mr. Atkinson speak.
Thank you, Chair. I guess the concern that, that, you know, our team would have is that the processes that I hear being talked about seem to have a, a very, a time impact, a significant time impact in terms of rethinking some of this. Of course, now Cyrus, I'll let, yeah, obviously, he can certainly speak on that. We had really hoped because we're in the process of bringing on retail people, and it's very difficult to bring them on without being able to tell them whether at this point, the, all the retail is on El Camino is going to have to divide up 100 square feet of signage. And so, so, so that's my major concern. I would say that if we wanted to just limit this to the Spring Line, to approximately the Spring Line site, all the Spring Line site is included in one sub-district of, of, of the specific plan. There are a few other properties a little bit to the north of us that are in it. Those are all small properties that are unlikely to really be affected by the terms of this. So I, I, I guess I'm not quite sure how to proceed because, you know, time, time is really of the essence here.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. With all due respect to Mr. Barnes, I, I think what Mr. Barnes described is a sectioned off version of what Mr. Sanandaji has already passed through. I don't doubt that Mr. Sanandaji started his proposal with what Spring Line needed and then was most generous with his time and his thinking to build in considerations for other projects in the downtown specific plan. So I think in a sense, we're about four steps beyond what Mr. Barnes is suggesting. And about 15 minutes ago, I got the impression that we were very close to concluding a proposal that would satisfy those of us that were particularly concerned about parapet signage. And we had, I think, clarified the goals were to increase the retail signage from a budget of 100 minus others to something closer to 300 i- in this, i- in the test case of the Spring Line project. And perhaps not a full 200, but a, a separate parapet budget. And then I think simplifying both the proposed ordinance and this approval process or this recommendation process by pulling out the overall project ID as special signage that would be discretionary. And I think we've, I think we've achieved or at least addressed goals from pretty much every corner at this point. And if Mr. Sanandaji feels that the suggested edits could be made without investing another 300 or 400 hours, if, you know, in the, in the hope, it's, you know, maybe only a couple of digits, then, then we should proceed, conclude, and have something to forward on to council. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think that's where we are. I may be optimistic, but I, I think so.
Through the chair.
Doran, I think your audio may be.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Is that to me, Chair Doran, or?
Yeah, that's, that's just.
Okay, thank you. I was going to offer to sort of reframe what or summarize what Commissioner Riggs, I believe, my understanding of what Commissioner Riggs is suggesting and sort of a path forward procedurally for us to proceed with that, if that's of interest to the chair and the commission. So I, what I, what I think, I understand your recommendation is Commissioner Riggs, and please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, is to adopt the resolution with the recommendations to the, as drafted with the following changes. Bear with me because I'm doing this on the fly. That we would revise the recommendation to exclude from the, and maybe I need to take a second to actually work with Steve to come up with this language. The idea would be to adapt the resolution subject to revisions excluding project informational signage from the review process as proposed and instead subject it to a discretionary review process. That is, will be determined and potentially crafted before this goes to the city council. How far off am I on that? Or was that close, Commissioner Riggs?
You know, I think it boils down really to that. Had we already agreed that directional signage was a separate category? And, and, and that did not have to be restricted by, by by either the retail or the parapet budget?
I, I don't think that we, that you all have made that decision. I, I did not hear that, but, but I would defer to the chair and the rest of.
Understanding on that was that if directional signage is required, its regulatory requirement would be subject to these limits.
Yeah, maybe it's not even an issue.
Perhaps Ms. Sandomeyer can, can jump in here and assess about.
I think is the, the question about the signage, the project identification signage, such as the large Spring Line? And that's what would be discretionary?
No, the current question is about directional signage.
The current direction, if I may clarify, stems from your comments very early on, Corinna, that we could not distinguish among directional project ID and tenant signage. And I think subsequent to that comment, it appeared that at least there's no legal restriction to separating project directional signage from tenant and building sponsorship signage. So if we can be allowed to dispense with the concern about project directional signage, then the only proposed change, I guess it boils down to, is that I use the phrase, specific overall project ID signage would have a separate discretionary review, whereas the others would simply be budgets by square footage and therefore predictable.
And through the chair, because I am with Commissioner Riggs on everything, but I just want to clarify one thing. I, I, we can differentiate against, with respect to the directional side, we can craft language that, that I think we would be comfortable with, but, but, but the wholesale distinction, I just want to be clear that we will come up with that language. We're, we're not making a blanket determination that all distinction is not content-based. But with that small qualifier, I, I am, I am with you.
Thank you. Chris Riggs, want to finish?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, lots of people want to speak. I think Commissioner Harris has been waiting long. It's his time, so let's go back to her. You're on mute.
Sorry, it's getting late. One quick clarification. And I, I'm, I'm actually in favor of this ordinance as written, but I definitely understand Commissioner Riggs issues, and I'd be happy to reframe bifurcating the parapet signage and the project signage. But I guess the only thing I don't understand in this new idea is that the, the parapet signage requirements, would those be similar to what the original upper level or whatever it was signage rules? So I, I want to make sure if we're all deciding that we're going to make the parapet signage separate, that what are the, did we decide on what the rules are for that? That, that's my question.
I'd like to hear what Commissioner Riggs has to say. It's his idea.
Yeah, I, I wasn't challenging the, the good work that has been done over these many weeks in defining that upper signage. I, I, I just wanted to categorize these three.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barnes. You're on mute.
One, I, I always appreciate progress, and I think you are making progress. I do have deep reservations about not hearing from the other stakeholders on this. And if we're going to be making sausage on the fly, then as we proceed through this, someone besides Mr. Riggs, I would like to have articulate what, you know, where we stand on this and what's being contemplated. So just at the point before the vote, you know, what's different, if you will, from what's in the current amendment and what, what specifically we're changing, I want to be super specific about that, so I can, I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, and I'm not quite sure I understand. That's my request.
Maybe we could call on Ms. Jordy to express that? What the changes from the amendment that was submitted would be?
Yeah, I, I probably would want to work through that with Mr. Atkinson and the applicant, Cyrus, between this meeting and the city council meeting. I think what, what we need, and, and I would turn to the applicant, because again, this is the applicant's proposed text amendment. I, I think what, what would be best is to get direction on what changes the planning commission would want to see to the applicant's text amendment, and we will, we will revise the resolution, making the recommendations subject to those changes. And so I, I, I tried to do my best in some ways, Mr. Riggs intentions, but if there are others or, or if there's, if I was, if I was inaccurate in my summary, then please go forth and let me know.
I, I, as I understand it, I think Mr. Barnes asked, Commissioner Barnes asked for someone other than Commissioner Riggs to express it. I, I believe the proposal is to retain the current draft restrictions in terms of square footage permissible, both for the retail level and for the upper level. And, but not include what's the third bullet point that we've been discussing, which is this additional allowance for signage based on gross floor area for the, intended for the project identification. And instead of having a, a budget for that, a number of square feet allocated to that, have that be discretionary. I think that was what the proposal was. And now I'm going to ask Commissioner Riggs if that expressed it correctly.
And if I could just, it'd be really helpful if staff would pull up the bullets on the screen so we can all look at it together.
Yeah, it's page 346 of the, the PDF, that someone could maybe get that up.
And I'm sorry, at the risk of interrupting, I do want to clarify that what, what Mr. Riggs may be proposing may not be what I have in mind as well. So knowing that there may be other ideas about what an appropriate number or revision to it might be, so we take all that into account.
Okay.
All right. So these bullets were actually to change Mr. Sanandaji's proposal. It might serve if we had bullets that were It might serve if we had bullets that were. Reflected of Mr. Sanandaji's proposal or of the. If, if the current proposal in front of us now were all bulleted similarly. In the net result, but. Again, I wanted to dispense with the phrase upper signage because what we want to do is distinguish parapet signage. And retail signage. And, and if it serves more appropriately to call it retail and tenant signage. I'll leave that up to Mr. Sanandaji, but. The idea was particularly to distinguish the parapet signage and. I think. Mr. DeCarty most fervently expressed that concern.
Okay, um, it is now. Ten fifty-seven, so we have to stop at eleven unless we take a vote to continue. We have one other fairly major item on the agenda tonight, which is presentation on Willow Village. I'm going to make a suggestion that we take a vote to continue. The meeting for the purpose of this signage amendment. But not take up the Willow Village presentation tonight and continue that presentation to another meeting. Because I think that would, that would make us run very late. So I think maybe the first thing I'd like to hear what the other commissioners, how, how they feel about continuing the meeting tonight beyond eleven.
So I'm fine doing what we can to wrap up signage because to lose momentum on this and lose current thought, I think would be just setting us back hours. I, I, I don't think there's a way through to do Willow Village tonight. Quite unfortunate. And at the same time, it is the largest development, I think. In, in the context of the city, so it deserves its own marquee time. I think well positioned within a meeting, if not its own meeting, given the gravity and the, the scale of what's being contemplated. So.
I totally agree. I'd like to just poll the commission, Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I concur with that sentiment.
Commissioner Harris. You're on mute.
And sorry, um, I'm fine with that too. I would suggest that maybe we could take like a three minute bio break and maybe. City Attorney Doherty would want to write up a little something with Mr. Atkinson while we're doing that.
I like that suggestion. Commissioner Riggs, are you amenable to continuing tonight for the purpose of this signage amendment?
Yes, Mr. Barnes put it very well.
Okay, well, I think we actually have to take a vote. The Sandmeyer, does that qualify as a vote? We did poll every member or do we need to actually take? Have a motion and a second and a vote.
Fine.
We're good. Okay, let's take, I'm going to extend it to a five minute bio breaks. I'm not sure they can actually write up and then the three. But let's get, come back at eleven oh five. Thanks for that.
Commissioner, Chair Doran.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there is a whiteboard function on, on the Zoom. I mean, something that can graphically represent what we're driving to, I think would be so helpful. But I guess we'll see what the city attorney comes back, but the narrative piece of it, I think is getting challenging in terms of. If we're doing any comparative analysis between this and that.
So hopefully she'll come back. I, I don't know if there's a whiteboard function, but I know that someone could put up a Word document and start doing a.
I was just going to suggest that.
Yeah.
If we can just put up a Word document. Steve, maybe I just give you a call right now and then we may be able to call Nero too while we're on the break.
Okay, great.
Try to make this work. Okay.
Thank you.
It looks like we have all five commissioners back. So I'm going to reconvene our meeting. I'm not sure if we have Ms. Doherty back, if we have any input from their sidebar. Okay, I'm not hearing from Ms. Doherty. So I, I think we have a little difference of opinion still on the commission. I think we clarified Commissioner Riggs' position. I would like to hear from Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner DeCarty and see if there's a counterproposal or see where they are on general direction that Commissioner Riggs is going.
I'm happy to go, but I was going to defer to Mr. DeCarty first to get anything to say. So my challenge is, I don't, I don't entirely know what the heck we're talking about, right? I think I get it, but I need, what I'm very concerned about is making the sausage as we go. And I want to make sure I understand. And the fact that we couldn't really articulate what it is we were talking about, confirm that, I just need to see what we're doing and what the proposal is. And then from there, my job is not to counterpropose to Mr. Riggs. My job is to say, hmm, I agree with that, or yes, that sounds reasonable. No, it doesn't, but it's not. I'm not in a position of having dueling ideas on this. I just want to make sure the idea we come up with is an idea that works for what we're tasked with doing. So that's what I'm setting out to do.
Thank you. Mr. DeCarty.
I'll say that I've really appreciated Commissioner Barnes' point before about trying to sever and just do this project versus the whole community. I think that has made this really difficult, the way it's come together. In addition to the fact that we're doing the signage four years after the project is approved. So all this is making it tricky. I do think that there is something simple that we can do here. As I understand, what's technically in front of us is this is going to the city council anyway. Are we recommending it? Or are we sending you to the city council without recommending? And as written, I'm going to vote to not recommend. We could spend a lot more time actually trying to alter it and come to an agreement. And if you all can do that, that's great and that's fine. But there is a more straight up thing, which is, do each of you believe you can recommend it as is right now or not? And then we could have a vote and then we could go home. So I just at least would want to put that out there.
Yeah, I like that suggestion. I think that three members have expressed their opinion they can't vote for it in its current form. I've not expressed an opinion, but I'm in that camp as well. I think Commissioner Harris did support it in its current form. But, you know, certainly we could take a vote on it. And if it were defeated, we could ask to convey a message to the city council that between the time of our vote and the time it comes up for city council, we would recommend, you know, changes one, two, and three. I don't know if that's optimistic that we could get to that point or not. But it is something that would, you know, it's a logical possibility. Given that we don't seem to have City Attorney back yet. Commissioner Riggs, would you like to take a stab at some bullet points that maybe Commissioner Barnes could get behind?
I just want to note that it's not about persuading me, right? Because this isn't, and I know that wasn't your intent, Chair Doran, I suspect it wasn't. If it's my, for my edification, I just would prefer to wait for City Attorney and, and Mr. Son and Dodge. Because really, this is about, for me, what Mr. Son and Dodge and Mr. Atkinson can live with. And then we've got this weird thing where we're trying to stretch it into everyone else who's not here. So my preference would be to hear from Mr. Atkinson, Mr. Son and Dodge, in terms of what they can live with, and then I can weigh in on that. But I'm not going to take away Mr. Riggs' mic, please don't do it for my edification.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm really responding to what Commissioner DeCarty said. I, I think it's actually, I see some merit in this idea. So I think we can be here all night trying to draft, especially if we're trying to draft universal ordinance for all city. But I would like to convey a little bit more information to the city council than just a no vote on the ordinance as proposed. I would like to give them some guidance on how we think it should change in a way that we could support it. And I, I don't know if we're going to be able to do that with enough specificity for you to get behind a resolution like that, Mr. Barnes, but that would be my hope.
I can tell you, I've been fully trying to listen to, I mean, been listening for several meetings about what the goals are and what the needs are, trying to respond to those and make sure that what several of us were concerned about in the previous meeting, which is largely the, the parapets, you know, what you see as you drive down El Camino, is reflected. And I think with the legal edits, it tossed Mr. Son and Dodge's proposal a bit upside down, so. I, I think I'm trying to read my fellow commissioners' concerns for, which I have to agree with, for avoiding an overload of signage, but at the same time, making sure we improve the predictability of the process to make it more prescriptive and less discretionary, which Mr. Barnes has spoken to each time. And I fully agree with. So that, that's the limit of where I am. And I think this is the perfect time to hear from Mr. Son and Dodge or City Attorney and I'll back off.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear from City Attorney first, see if you've made any progress during our break.
Thank you, Chair Doran. So, yes, I, the applicant and I just spoke and we came up with our understanding of where the commission might be right now. And the applicant is amenable to working with my office between tonight and the city council meeting to propose some alternative language for the city council to consider. So I will read what we would work on between now and the city council meeting to provide some alternative language. And, and before I do that, I just want to reiterate my procedural recommendation, which is we have an applicant text amendment before the planning commission tonight. The planning commission can recommend it or not recommend it, or can recommend it subject to some proposed revisions. And so what I'm hearing from the commission is that you would like to perhaps adopt the resolution recommending the text amendment subject to a few revisions. I will read, read the sort of substance of those revisions right now. But then the applicant, as the applicant on the text amendments in my office, would then actually put those revisions into ordinance format and present it to the city council. So that's my procedural recommendation for tonight. And I will pull up the changes that, that we understand the commission might be interested in. The first would be to revise the ordinance as proposed, provide an exemption for directional signage. As I said, I think that there's a way that we can do that, that's consistent with the First Amendment principles on content-based restrictions. The second would be to provide and establish a discretionary, actually, provide and establish or, or utilize an existing discretionary process for project identification signage that's in excess of the overall signage allocation. And then the last is to revise the upper level signage limitations to instead be based on some parapet, square footage or frontage measurement. And Commissioner Riggs, we need to better understand your intent on this if, if the commission indeed wants to revise the resolution to, to make a recommendation regarding that.
So through the chair. Yes, so through the chair. I'm not proposing any change to the calculation, the measurement or the budget. I'm only proposing that we refer to parapet signage as a limitation distinct from the tenant signage and dispense with the term upper level signage. Because the concern that more than one of us has is with the parapets. In other words, the tops of buildings being overloaded with signage.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the suggested amendment with those changes?
Yes, I got myself into that. Yes, so I will move to approve the proposal for signage amendments. But with the following clarifications or changes that directional signage be separate from the building signage budget or calculations that parapet signage and tenant signage and tenant level signage. The distinct budgets with the intent to restrict parapet signage, but to augment tenant signage, particularly retail tenant signage. And that any overall, any special overall project identification signage be treated separately with a discretionary review.
Could I suggest that maybe you clarify that the tenant signage would be subject to the formula that are in the existing amendment?
Yes.
And that the parapet signage be subject to the formula that are in the existing amendment for upper level signage? I think that's your intent.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Right, which I think, yeah, in this case, for spring line would be 200 square feet as opposed to that additional 200 for the spring line arch. That's just as an example to help our understanding of what we're doing.
Do we have a second for that motion? Commissioner Harris has seconded, so I do want to take a vote. Feel free to add additional comments during the vote. So Commissioner Barnes.
So I want to check in with the City Attorney as to, you had laid out how you were thinking this was going to be taken back. You've got some input from a commissioner related to that. Do you have any comments on, are you able to work that in? Do you have any comments on the practicality of that? I want to know what I'm voting on, and I would like your opinion on the either practicality or from the, from the applicant, the functional benefit or disadvantage that those changes present to the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I, I will speak to the, my initial analysis on defensibility. And then I'll let the applicant speak to functionality. Yes, I think that we can take these, this direction and craft it, some revisions to the ordinance that are content neutral and defensible.
And in your interpretation, were, are there any changes to budgets? That budgets being a colloquial term for the amount of square footage that would be allowed going into this proposal and what we have now?
Yeah, that, that I will defer to Ms. Sandomeyer and the applicant on. I think they're probably better qualified to speak to that than I.
Thank you.
Cyrus, would you like me to take this?
Yeah, I was going to say, if I may, I was just waiting, sorry. There is no intent to change budgets. And in fact, we, we want to stick with the formulas that are prescribed in the draft ordinance. I think the, the nuance is that if anything were to exceed those allowances, that that's where the discretionary review would come in as part of the, the application process for the master sign program. And those would be unique, one-off circumstances where the commission would, would have discretion as appropriate for the, for the project being reviewed.
And so to follow on question, does this, as contemplated, work for your project in your opinion?
It, it does with the, the clarification the Commissioner Riggs provided, which is that I think if we're to look at marketability, leaseability, and, and just the intent of signage driving business, both on the retail and the office front, having certainty is key, both in terms of general location and then size. And so having a rather prescriptive set of budgets, if you will, as you labeled it, is extremely helpful because then we can all collectively look at that. That is the transparency, that's the objective metric that we can all rely on. Candidly, there isn't going to be a lot of variation or change or iteration, I should say, in project signage or project identity. We're going to name the buildings of the projects once. We, we're going to place the, we're going to design the architecture. We're going to place the signs where they need to go and we won't have to revisit that again. So again, if this was, you know, if we were to do this for a new project, we would do that concurrently with the overall building design. And so it's not adding any additional burden to a developer project from, from my perspective.
Great. And then, and then Stanford, whomever else, if they don't, if they cared enough, they'd show up at this meeting. If they have any other decisions later on.
So I, I did want to, I did want to mention Michael Birch, their consultant, is actually an attendee who's been on the line. He's actually attended every one of our meetings and so he is available to provide comment to the extent, I believe he did in the working session last around as well.
I'll leave it to him. So great, thank you, thank you for that and that. And I thank you to Mr. Riggs for following this through and, and helping me to understand what we were doing. And I am understanding, so thank you very much. And I support this and I will vote yes to recommend, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yeah, hugely appreciate all the work, Mr. Son and Dodge, your whole team on this staff, trying to work this through. It's a clunky process and it's not anybody's preferred one, completely see that. I think directionally, this is headed in the right way, but it's not strong enough for me, so I'll vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris.
I vote yes, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy is no longer with us, Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So motion passes with four votes in favor and two commissioners absent. Sorry, one opposed and two commissioners absent. So.
Thank you very much, commissioners. I know this was extremely late and it was a lot of, a lot of nuanced discussion. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to our City Attorney, Ms. Doherty, you've got a little more work ahead of you before the city council meeting, but hopefully that will be manageable.
Yeah, thanks all around to all, all those who have been working behind the scenes. We only show up for a couple hours of this.
So we are at 11:30 and we agreed to continue the meeting only for the purposes of that, that amendment. So I wanted to continue the presentation item on Willow Village until a future meeting. Ms. Sandomeyer, do we have informational items?
Yes, so I just have an update for the January 24th meeting. And we have two items. We have the housing element NOP, and then we have a single family home use permit project. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I would like to, I'm not sure if it's actually a question, but express my view on the new format for this combined PDF for all the staff reports. I find it very cumbersome and I'm able to find the individual staff reports through the table of contents. I get that, but when you're scrolling back and forth from the exhibits to the staff report, it's really easy to slide into the previous staff report or the one after. And I, I just, I'm not a fan of this new format and hope that we can get back to something that's more like the old format. That's my information. Um, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, and if, just to be specific about that, if you could put the links back into the agenda, just something as simple as that, in Parkus PDF somewhere. It's frankly unwieldy and, and I know the look and feel and the UI of this site is really nice. Just this small tweak is really going to be helpful for me at least to, to be able to manage the project information. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you. And with that, 11:31, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night, everybody. Thanks for hanging in there.
Good night, thank you, Chair Doran.
Night, thank you.